I'd like to call, no, I take that back. Mr. Seawall, would you care to lead us in prayer tonight? Say a prayer for us.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, come before you this evening in the name of Jesus. And Lord, first of all, we thank you for this night. Thank you, Lord, for bringing each one of us here. Lord, we know that many set out from their homes to go different places this afternoon, this evening, and were unexpectedly interrupted, Lord, through a car accident. And yet, each one of us here have arrived safely, Lord. We don't want to take that for granted. We thank you, Lord, for safety and for life and breath this evening. Lord, you brought us here to this place, into this room, for a reason. And, Lord, each one here, each one of these leaders in front of us, has been appointed to serve. Lord, we thank you for their willingness to take upon themselves this responsibility to serve the people of Tawny Town. Lord, we pray for Angela, for Rhonda, for Justin, Misty, Amber, Daniel, Larry, Mike, and Tim. Lord, each one who has taken up this mantle of service, we ask, Lord, that you give them grace. Lord, that they would serve with joy, that you give them joy in their service, Lord, that it would not merely be a burden, Lord, but that you'd give them the strength, counting it more blessed to give than to receive, looking to Christ, who himself counted it more blessed to give than to receive, as he gave his own life for our salvation. Lord, we pray for wisdom, as many decisions are before us, Lord, that are not always easy, and we just ask for your wisdom and your guidance. And we pray also, Lord, that in the manner that these decisions are made, that each person in this room would have respect and honor and patience for one another. You'd grant us self-control, not to let emotions and tempers take charge, Lord, but with utmost patience and love to conduct all of our dealings this evening. All these things we ask you, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, and you are free to leave, as opposed to staying here through thee. Now, I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole October 7th, 2025, to order, please. Roll call.
Mike.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Amber.
Here.
Daniel.
Here.
Misty.
Misty has informed me that she was sick from work today, and she was not able to make it, so. All right, please stand for the pledge. Next, I seek approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Tim.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes. Now, I seek approval of the September 2nd Committee of the Whole Minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Larry.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
Mike.
Stand. Next, I seek approval of the September 4th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Amber.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes. Next, we will entertain comments from our citizens, and please, due to the duration of our meeting tonight, hold your comments to three minutes if you please can.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Steve Zagga. I'm an attorney. As it happens, I represent Mick Wagner in a current litigation with you. I'm not here during these three minutes to talk about that, but I am here to talk on behalf of Tammy Graham, who is here as well, about the most exciting and wonderful topic that a city council can deal with and that a lawyer can talk about in that sewer. I understand, having been a Northwest Arkansas resident for 50 years, and having been close to some of the controversies that have surrounded the landfill, that that is a difficult thing for you to manage in this town, and I'm not going to talk otherwise. However, the other difficult thing that I think city councils have to manage is its wastewater system. And I think all of you understand how important that is, given the fact that Bethel Heights, Arkansas, in my opinion, is no longer a town because it couldn't manage its wastewater system. So, that said, you have the power, I believe, and the duty to manage what goes into your wastewater system through your permit, and the Arkansas Department of Health allows you, through their regulations, to impose certain duties on people who put things into your wastewater stream. Right now, you have leachate from the Echo Vista landfill that is coming out, that my client believes, and I think she's got good reason to believe this, is contributing to ammonia gases in and around the landfill. And I know, and I'm sure Justin has explained this to you, you do not have the ability to regulate the air quality under Arkansas law that deals with what goes on around the landfill, but you absolutely have the duty to deal with the leachate and the ability to do that. And so, it is my opinion, and I'm encouraging you to take this action, to mandate to Echo Vista that they engage in a pre-treatment program for that leachate, so that not only will that odor be controlled that's coming from that leachate, but also that it will keep that particular untreated waste stream out of your sewer. And I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tammy Graham, 1984, South Penalto Road. Lift station and ammonia problem. Tawny Town is known about the noxious odors coming from the lift station, which serves waste management exclusively for about three years or so. Based on the respiratory and ocular symptoms, we are breathing ammonia at approximately 50 parts per million, according to the toxicological profile for ammonia. I have it if you want to look at it. Tawny Town has control authority over sewer line and lift station since 2010, and it requires waste management to follow city ordinances per Chapter 52 in your code. Tawny Town has allowed good citizens to be exposed to excessively high levels of ammonia and possibly more toxic chemicals secondary to ignorance of their own codes and authority. Rather than thick battles they could have won with waste management, we were allowed to suffer needlessly. Sewer report by contracted engineer Zach Johnson identified numerous issues with the system, including ammonia concentrations up to 1,400 parts per million on 8425, and possibly other chemical byproducts, failing manhole covers, possibility of sewer system overflows, and a large drop in a section of the line, which, in my opinion, could represent a break allowing for leachate to contaminate our water table. Tawny Town has neglected to maintain the sewer lines. Mr. Johnson recommends jetting the pipes every six months, and that's John Stun, I apologize, Zach. He states, "The sewer system's chemical environment poses a direct quality of life and potential public health impacts to Tawny Town residents." That is a quote. He recommends air quality testing to be done to identify specific chemical and pre-treatment program to be done to remove those chemicals at the source. Here's the good part. Tawny Town is working with a company called Carbon Chicken Product headquartered just over the hill to use their product on lift station to filter out the air. I asked Mr. Reims, a co-founder and his biochemist, if there had been scientific studies done with their filter on sewer lift stations with similar problems, and I was told that this was, quote, "R&amp;D project." Research and development means that we residents along South Penalto Road are being used as free lab rats for carbon chicken. It is a win-win deal for them. If it's unsuccessful, they gain data for improvements. If it is successful, they gain valuable publicity and sales and marketing, according to their According to their website, it is a slow-release chicken litter pellets combined with nutrients and micro char biochar, the organic gardener's secret weapon. That's what I read. Could Tawny Town not have asked Mr. Johnson? Okay.
30 seconds.
I got 30 seconds?
I'll give you 30.
I appreciate it.
I want to hear your answer.
The thing is this, Zach's good. Ask him for recommendations. Don't be running up the hill to find some chicken filter or get some washer eggs and stuff down it. Sample the air, follow Zach's recommendations. We have paid him to do a job, and he did a fine job. And if things were done right, codes followed, ordinance were followed, we wouldn't be standing in this cesspool. And that is almost a pun intended, and I appreciate your time.
Good evening. Mick Wagner, 409 Pennzo Avenue, Tawny Town. I provided all of the council, as well as the attorneys, a petition that's signed by approximately 40 Tawny Town citizens. It reads as follows. "We, the undersigned citizens of Tawny Town, respectfully call upon the City Council to exercise its authority under Arkansas law to enter into an executive session, propose of reading a personnel evaluation that cannot be released to the public under AGOP 2025-80. By signing below, we believe that council members should be fully informed on employee performance when making personnel decisions. Executive sessions provide a lawful means to review these evaluations while protecting city privacy, or citizens and employee privacy. Final discussions must remain transparent through open sessions. We urge the City Council to act in the best interest of Tawny Town." I have also provided something that I was wanting to be attached, but it won't be labor to the point, but in summary, it says, "We ask the City Council to place this on the agenda, convene an executive session, meeting the third-party evaluation findings. I notice there is on the agenda actions to consider that. We ask you to affirm the executive session review and note that it is a statutory right of the governing body under Arkansas FOIA ACA 2519106 subparts, as mentioned. Regardless of whether this record is exempt from the public release, it is able to be read." And I would emphasize, in lieu of Actions 72CV 25, 2686, that Mr. Zagga is representing me on, it would be a very good idea that you have full context, as this may relate to that as well. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council members. My name is Heather Armstrong. I live at 3851 Old Highway 68. I am the owner of Loverpaws Grooming here in Tawny Town. I started this grooming business to serve our community. Over time, my dream of a peaceful life in Tawny Town quickly became a nightmare. Since Tawny Town does not operate as an animal shelter, my business has been forced into becoming a dumping ground for unwanted and stray animals. In just the last year, we have had to add two additional cabins to our property. This also requires us to have a power pole installed, as well as make jails for the vicious ones. I am constantly getting messages begging for help, clients calling rescue after rescue after rescue, clients calling to have a dog removed from their property that has either bit a child or killed a pet. If I say no and apologize, sorry, we're full, the next day, I've got more four-legged on my property. Last year, I was walking my personal dog to the dumpster to take the trash out, my daily routine, you would think, until a 65-pound pit bull came charging out of the woods, grabs our dog, throws it in the air. As his body was lifeless, the dog then turned on me. I was then drug 10 feet across my yard and ended up with injuries to my foot, ankle, and leg, and had to be seen with emergency care. Two months ago, I came home to a dead goat, two dead guineas. Summer of 2023, I came home to a donkey down in his pen. In case anybody would like to know, it costs a lot to put down a vicious dog. Costs are anywhere between $350 and $550, depending on the aggression of the dog and how much it weighs. Here are the facts. In recent months, as many as 20 dogs per week are being dumped at my property. Many of these animals are aggressive and dangerous. I, myself, my family, and my employees have been bit and mauled on multiple occasions. Due to the economy, most of these dogs dumped have either extreme medical issues or too violent to hold. Once again, more dogs dumped. My property has been targeted with gunfire, vandalism, tire slashing, even animals shot. I have called the authorities, but the true issue is Washington County Animal Services has told me to contact Tawny Town. Once I call Tawny Town, I am told to come in, fill out forms, but in the end, nothing happens. I still have to pay the fee out of my pocket for a dog that is not mine, transport it, because, most people don't know this, but officers are not allowed to have an animal in their vehicle, because somebody else could be allergic to that animal. This is to protect the human that might be allergic. When a dog is surrendered, they must be taken to the Washington County Animal Shelter. Tawny Town is legally obligated to pay the $150 intake per animal. Thank you, guys, for your time.
What was your name again?
Heather Armstrong.
Anyone else?
I came here, my name is Kristen Lawhen. I reside at a number of addresses in Tawny Town, but the main one probably 458 Steel Road, Tawny Town 72762, also at 886 Viatore, Tawny Town, Arkansas 72762, Unit D. But I came here to talk about, but you have two more meetings before the end of this year, so I suppose I'll discuss most of it at the next one. But I sent this out to almost every person I knew that had something to do with Tawny Town. Be at the City Hall meeting tonight at 6:00 PM in Tawny Town. Tell everyone you know, please. I do mean everyone. For the rest of the year, there is three City Hall meetings, including today. I have plenty of questions. Embezzlement, misappropriated funds, among other things that happened in the last couple of fiscal years, as well as what city council is planning to budget for the 2026 fiscal year, with concern to Parks Department, the elderly, vets, city water problem and drainage, the dump, the police department, city roads and streetlights, and the fire department, among other enlightening subject matters that uses the taxpayers' money. Just sending you the info, please tell everyone you can, as teenagers, children, teachers, parents, really anyone that pays taxes, should go to City Hall meetings to know where their past, current, and future taxpayer dollars are spent. It is one of the reasons we all vote. Now, I've got a stack of papers over there, and I could go through quickly in my mind the articles that I have read over the number of years, but in the last month and a half, I mean, Tawny Town's looking a little like, I don't know, other places in the country that I've traveled to that I wouldn't live. So, I don't know how we make 2026, 27, 28, 29, 30 better, more like it was, I don't know, in the last 30 years that we've had property here. Warren Center and Linda Center aren't here, they can't be. Warren just had hip replacement surgery. Dr. Hamby did it, he's doing all right. But I know that there are a number of people in Tawny Town, like her, that was talking about the city dump and it leaching into our water system. The vapes alone have a number of batteries in them, so if kids are smoking, I don't know, one or two of those a week, and they put them in the trash, and they go to the city dump, that's leaching out, and that's going, I mean, on a number of levels. But the water, the water tables, the vast majority of the water here that the farmers use is well water. I mean, I know our property has a lot of it, and, I mean, our property's far enough from the dump, but you can smell it on the other side of Springdale. It smells kind of like what the chicken factories used to smell like back when I was growing up on the other side of Springdale. But that's really all I have to say right now. I'll definitely attend the next meeting.
What was your name?
Kristen Lawhen.
I'm sorry?
Kristen Lawhen.
Kristen Lawhen, L-A-W-N.
K-H-R-I-S-T-I-N, Lawhen, L-A-W-H-O-N.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Name's Kenneth Lovett, 18702 Clearwater Road. First, I want to apologize. Mr. Kevin Bortz over here pushed my buttons last week, so I turned around and engaged him. And there's reasons behind that, but anyway. I'd also like to play a portion of the previous council meeting, so if y'all don't mind, I got about two seconds on that.
Courage is the first of human qualities, because it's the quality which guarantees the others. We have cowards in this city. We have cowards in this room.
When you're attacked, personality, from the bench, it don't sit very well. Everybody expects respect. You got to give it to receive it. What makes a person a coward? A person is considered a coward when their excessive fears prevents them from facing danger, taking responsibility, or standing up for what is right, leading them to avoid discussion or difficult actions and situations to protect themselves. This can manifest as a refusal to take risks and unwillingness to admit mistakes, or a tendency to rationalize inaction rather than acting decisively. I was exposed to some serious vapors from Echo Vista landfill, December 29, 2021. Since that date, I've attempted to protect my family and area residents from these hazardous vapors by following the process through the U.S. EPA, who referred me to Heinz Braun ADQ through several different channels, through Becky Keog, Julie Link, Caleb Osborne, Shane Corey, Bailey Taylor, and a list goes on. The PC and EC committee said that they couldn't do anything for us, and they're the ones that's supposed to regulate ADQ. The district manager, Blake Small, blatantly states that what you smell is a skunk. That's real professional. That's pretty much all I got written down, but I'm frustrated, because we all know there's a problem there, and we still haven't done anything about it in four years. There's some of us that go down to PC and E and ADQ and try to talk to them, they turn around, they sue us. Where do we go from here? We got to have something done. Removing public comments from the, whatever the committee is, Mr. Bortz is over, is not the proper thing. They're gone. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Mark Calcagney, 12642 Arbor Acres Road. Some people don't think I should have a voice here, because they say I'm not a resident, but I do pay Tawny Town taxes, and I have 16 acres that I pay taxes on, so I would hope that would give me a voice. So, I'm here tonight to apologize for giving the city and Mayor Russell a black eye over the payment the city made to the citizen's lawyer, Richard Mays. It was my fault, as I pushed the mayor to pay that bill, that Ross Nolan should have, the city's lawyer should have done the majority of the work on it. The bill was, a lot of it was travel and deposition that Richard Mays did, who was the citizen's lawyer. But again, it should have been done by the city's lawyer. And of course, if you watched the Pollution Control and Ecology Meeting, or the case, both those lawyers worked together. I have emails stating that they worked together. It was mishandled how it was paid, but it wasn't done deceitfully or underhanded. Mayor Russell acted on the behalf of Tawny Town residents and thought it was the right thing as the bill came in from Richard Mays. After the fact, Mayor Russell got the approval from the city council. It should have gone through the process for payables. Once it was discovered as an error, we reimbursed the city for the total amount of Mr. Mays' bill. I'm sorry for this situation, and it really was an honest mistake, it was just something that should not have happened, and it was a mistake. Someone said it was like robbing a bank and bringing the money back, which is a ridiculous analogy, especially because it was done for health and safety of the citizens fighting the landfill, knowing that people are getting sick, and with the danish air we all breathe. I hope I get a chance later tonight to expand on this with a highly respected doctor's report about the latest air test. The city did save $15,000, as the work should have been paid by the city, as it was reimbursed from non-city funds. Again, I apologize to the city and to the mayor for the situation, and I'm so sorry the city and Mayor Russell got embarrassed. And again, it was not done deceitfully or underhandedly. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm kind of hoarse, so I apologize, I kind of sound like a man right now. My name's Anna Watkins. I own Everlink Consulting here in Tawny Town. I have started working with Heather Armstrong over the past few months, and I have seen firsthand the damage that has been done by the dogs in the streets. I have invoices here, $331, $375, $748, individual dogs that Heather has paid out of pocket over $250,000 over the past few years of her business funds that have gone straight to dogs that are not hers, animals that are not hers. I'm not here today to belittle y'all, berate y'all, that you're not doing a job, but this is a public safety problem. Those dogs are dangerous, and they're loose in the neighborhoods. I see them all the time. I see them hit on the side of the road, I see them dumped. They're everywhere. The citizens and small business owners do not deserve this. Heather, along with others, don't need to be footing these bills. They're huge. We need to have a better solution for this. We need a procedure, and we need to know what to do, because Springdale is just leaving us out to dry on this. We have tried everything we can to get them to cooperate, and they won't anymore. It's too big of an issue. Tonight, I'm formally asking the council to take immediate action. I want to, we want to direct the city to reimburse Heather for her shelter fees that she already has and commit to paying them going forward. We need to develop a plan for animal control for Tawny Town, so the residents and businesses are not left to fend for themselves. If no actions taken, we'll have no choice but to seek remedies outside of this room, including legal finding, excuse me, legal claims, contacting state authorities, and involving the media. None of us want Tawny Town to be known as a place where the government ignores its duty, abandons public safety, and punishes citizens for speaking up. We came here tonight, we didn't want to fight, we just want y'all to know this is happening and help us find a solution. Pay your obligations, stop pushing it on the business owners. We have started a nonprofit that I'm hoping is going to move forward and try to help with this. Every nonprofit I have called that takes in dogs, all are saying, "We're full, we're full, we're full. There's too many citizens in Washington County. There's only one county animal shelter." It's just, which is great, the Northwest Arkansas is booming, but we're running out of options for the animals, and I don't think it's fair to citizens or the animals. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Hi. Thank you all for listening to us tonight and allowing us to have our citizen comments. Nina Brown, 1851 South Penalto Road here in Tawny Town. My greatest concern tonight is there at the lift station. We're talking about putting a carbon chicken filter in. Not sure if this is going to help or not. We feel like we're kind of being a little bit of the guinea pig. I understand it's going to accomplish taking the air through, neutralizing it, and making the odors better. When it does that, that's been my alarm bell to bail the house when the odors get so bad. We take that away, and we're not sure where the, if the chemicals are still in the air, I'm not sure what to say of who is going to contact me when that air test bad. Concerning the air testing, I hope we can find someone that is good, qualified, competent, not connected to the CTH testing, Little Rock. Hopefully, there's somebody that's independent, that can do the testing for more than just one or two things, test and find out what all kind of chemicals are in this air. Something has gone awry in that area, and we, you know, you have heard it all at one time or another. But my concern is that we get a very, very good baseline before this is installed. If we're going to install this and we're going to try it, that it's studied thoroughly, and is it just masking the odors or taking, neutralizing the odors? What is it doing with the chemicals? Is it taking chemicals out? Is it lowering those levels? I think in my situation especially, it needs, I need more answers because my health has failed, and these odors, I mean, is, I can leave, and I get better. I can... Anyway, thank you all. I know you're working on it, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Michelle Eichler, 1851 South Penalto Road, the other half of the brown. I just want to call attention to what is going on and the big concerns. So I want to also thank the wonderful EMS that does come out all the time and responds and helps when situations are going on with the waste management and the smells of the chemicals. I have big concerns about this carbon chicken that's going on there because right now, even though the smell is horrible, that is kind of our safety of knowing when something bad's going on and to be able to get out of there. If we're going to have things that are just covering up this odor, we don't know. So we can be outside completely doing activities, and it's going to hit us. I will tell you, May 21, and some of the EMS gentlemen that were there and other neighbors that stopped by seeing all the commotion that was going on, it was scary. You know, the EMS went, responded to the situation that was going on with Ms. Brown going down with all the fumes and stuff that were coming from there, and literally within twenty minutes of us trying to get her ready to transport to the hospital, to the ER because of what was happening, she couldn't even walk out to a vehicle to get in the vehicle. Complete seizures, paralysis, you can't walk. So it's scary. It's going to happen again, and masking everything and covering it up is not okay. So I don't know what systems are going to be in place again to alert that something's going on, that they're of high level, what baseline test is being done to even establish anything, is it being done by qualified individuals? You know, if we really do as a city now have this authority over these lines and can hold them to things more, then let's do that. Let's start doing the testing then at the source. What is actually being put in? Let's test that leachate. Let's know what's going in. Is there something that they can truly control that flow? And if so, let's get it on record. What flow amounts are they truly putting in there, and when is it coming down the pipes? Because it is, and there's been the differences with everything. So if we have the authority to do anything, I'd say we start doing it and holding it accountable because it is drastically affecting people and the property. On top of all that, you know, we have the water runoff that it comes through there, too, that runs all over those sewer lines. That is another issue of those. What's going to happen if something fails in that lift station? You know, what, what is that going to amount to? And so I encourage you, too, to look at that report that was put out from the ADQ because there was only one chemical that showed up there at that lift station that was found no other place that's been affecting them. Thank you.
I believe you were very close to your time. Thank you. Anyone else? Nobody online?
No.
All right, saying no more. We have no old business, and our new business starts with a presentation from Mr. Latham on Rockin' Chair Ranch.
I've got some relatives with me, by the way.
They are not relatives.
Well, I don't know if they are relatives, but anyway, their last name is Latham. Mayor Russell and I have been actually meeting with Eli Latham and Gabrielle Carter over these last few months. They really have a dream to create and preserve approximately twenty-five acres of the original Jerry Henshaw property. So they're going to make a presentation to you all, kind of what their vision is, and go ahead. Eli and Gabrielle.
Hey, y'all, thank you. My name's Elijah Henshaw-Latham.
And I'm Gabrielle Carter. Gabrielle Carter?
Yes. And thank you so much for having us here and putting us on the agenda. We're super excited to tell you all about a project that is going on right down the road on South Barrington Road at Rockin' Chair Ranch. And y'all being leaders of this community, we, we wanted y'all's input and to let you know what's going on there. We're not a hundred percent sure yet where the, all the funding is going to come from, but we're super excited about it. Next slide, please.
Yeah, we know you guys have a lot on the agenda this evening, so we want to keep it very brief. We're just going to talk a bit about the property itself. Many of you may recognize it from the white bull statue. Elijah will talk about his grandparents, Betty and Jerry Henshaw, who were the original owners of the property. We have a vision for what the property could become and have received some community feedback from people who fish on the lake. We'd love to share with you guys, and then we'll just conclude with what's going on, the current situation, and how we can partner with the city. Thank you.
Yes, thanks. So we're hoping to transform some of this private land to hopefully a place that benefits all of the city of Tawny Town communal space. A little bit about the property. There's, there's, there's the white bull and the lake that many of y'all are probably familiar with. Right there, the white bull has really become a landmark in Tawny Town over the last sixty years it's been there. But there's also forty-five total acres that, that we're dealing with right now. It's connected to the Betty Henshaw Bird Sanctuary that is owned by the Northwest Arkansas Land Trust now, that my grandmother gifted that to him. The forty-five acres includes twenty acres in the back. It's, it's really beautiful. It's, there's a lot of old growth trees. It was once cattle lands, but now it's home to a lot of native species of plants and animals. There's, there's three significant structures that are in very sound condition on the property. There's a five-car garage, there's a big storage barn, it's in very good shape. There's, there's the home on the hill that's thirty-two hundred square feet. It's where my grandparents raised four children there, including my mom, who's Dawn Henshaw. And it overlooks the lake. The lake there, my, my grandparents always allowed people to come onto that property, sunup to sundown, every day of the year, you'll see people out there fishing. And, and so, you know, we have really been, we've really been struck by this community spirit that I felt my entire life that my grandparents had, and so Gabrielle and I are just looking to maintain that community spirit that, that they began. Next slide, please. So I'm going to tell you a little bit briefly about my grandparents, Betty and Jerry, who were very active in the Tawny Town community in their lifetimes. Jerry, who has a plaque right behind us out by the park, he was a very successful poultry manager and cattle rancher. He was five times elected to the Arkansas House of Representatives. He helped found the, the Tawny Town Area Volunteer Fire Department. And Betty, who raised four children on the ranch, was an avid birder and environmentalist. In 2022, she donated those twenty-five acres to, to the Northwest Arkansas Land Trust to be a, to be a bird sanctuary forever. She was just a gem of a woman, and she, she just passed in November. And so we're just, you know, looking for options of like, okay, what could happen with this property moving forward that could really benefit everyone? And that's why we're here today.
Next slide, please. Yeah, so as Elijah said, we have just felt really compelled to steward forward what could happen to this land. We have some ideas for what the property could become, but we're very open to any options. But mainly, we just want to provide a peaceful gathering place for our Tawny Town community. We would love to build some ADA standard walking trails through the back twenties so people can engage with the nature back there. It's just been such a sweet spot to, to be in a very peaceful place. We'd love to transform the home into a welcome center, both for the forty-five acres and the neighboring bird sanctuary, and that could also be used as a small-scale retreat space, potentially also as a wedding or event venue. Next slide, please. One of the things that really came to our attention in these past months of working on the project is just how rapidly growing this part of the country is. It has come up so many times. And now Tawny Town has over nine thousand residents, and we believe that this property could really be a wonderful amenity for our growing population, and that's really why we're here today. We'd love to, to work with the city of Tawny Town and see what could happen in preserving this land. Next slide.
Yeah, and I, we've had a lot of community feedback. I think it would be wildly popular. We have set up some QR codes on signs down by Henshaw Lake down there, and so if people are fishing, they can use their phones to pull up our website. It's a really good website Gabrielle made. It's got a questionnaire on there, just asking for them to put memories on the property and also where they would like to see the city of Tawny Town moving forward and the Rockin' Chair Ranch moving forward. You can see some of the feedback we've gotten, just people that have just said how much peace the property brings them, you know, all the big bass that they've caught in that lake. And we talk to people every day that are down there that, that just, it's so important for them to have this land, that they can come to, bring their children to grow up on. We've talked to so many people who have just spent their entire lives coming to this property. And so, you know, now's, now this, this property's in transition, and it's, it's an opportunity to really maintain something beautiful for this community. I think it could really make a huge impact on the city of Tawny Town.
Next slide, please. Yeah, so going along with that, we've had a lot of great meetings with Arkansas Game and Fish Commission, as well as Arkansas Parks Heritage and Tourism Department, and Northwest Arkansas Land Trust and, and other groups around here, just finding out what people are interested in. And Arkansas Game and Fish Commission is very interested in helping maintain the lake and just keeping it as a place for people to come and being able to do some programming, outdoor education, and teaching kids how to fish on a very fishable lake. So in this presentation, we kind of wanted to bring you guys through the past, a bit about the history of this iconic property. Elijah got to tell you a bit about his grandparents, who we just admire so much and wish were still here with us today. I told you a bit about casting vision, just what we hope could happen here, but really what I want to, to finish with is where we are right now. The property has been appraised for two and a half million dollars, and we have had many discussions, and like he said at the beginning, we're still looking for the funding. We have been speaking with the Arkansas Parks Heritage and Tourism Department about a matching grant, but it is quite a long timeline and realistically wouldn't come through with funding until 2027. Unfortunately, time is our biggest obstacle here, so we just want to say thank you to the city of Tawny Town for being here. We would love to partner and find a way to find, to find the funding for this, and would just like to discuss further any partnership opportunities. Next slide, please. So thank you guys so much for your attention today. Hope we kept it brief enough. We have a QR code. If anybody would like to scan it, it will take you directly to our website where we have more information, as well as all of our contact information for any questions, comments. We're very open to meetings. We also have our email up here, the address at 2150 South Barrington Road, and our website. Thank you so much.
Thank you. God bless.
If you don't mind, we're going to slip out, council. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And anytime somebody feels that they can, they're ready to leave, you don't have to stay and observe all this all night long. You're free to leave at any time, any juncture that y'all feel necessary. All right, next we have a discussion of the 2025 city tax levy figures, and I guess, Rhonda, that goes to you.
Yeah. Washington County had my name on the letter, so it was given to me. So right now, we have a millage of three point two. That's what it, that's what they have. So they're asking if they want to keep it the same, or do you want to change it, or what the council would like to do. Also, I think, Justin, the limit is five?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, the council can levy up to five.
Okay.
Counsel?
I'm all for leaving just like it is right now.
That's what I have, I have in the past stated that, that I was not in favor of increasing it.
No, I have no desire to increase it either.
So. Well, I don't know about dropping it, but we, we are one of the lowest in, in the area, I do believe, so, but.
Throwing it out there, pros and cons. You don't want to go up, maybe you want to go down.
So if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion and we pass this on to city council.
I'll second that motion.
At three point two.
At three point two five?
Three, three point two.
Three point two.
Okay, excuse me.
Keep it the same. That's what they have on record, okay.
Roll call.
And, oh, and Justin, I put in a, a resolution, if you would go over it, make sure that I did it correctly.
I will, absolutely. And, yeah, this will need to be passed, certainly at the October meeting, so it could be...
Yes, because it's gotta be...
You have to go to the court. Yeah, for them to levy the tax.
Correct. Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Next, we have a discussion of sewer evaluation report. Mike or Zach?
Yeah, I'm not, I just asked the, this people on the agenda. Um, I did email, uh, Zach some questions and, uh, I'm sure he was probably gonna address some of these things, but just, uh, in case other council had questions that they wanted to ask, th- these are the questions that I emailed Zach on this. Um, what type of air quality evaluation are you recommending? This was in page four. Number two, because the ammonia concentrations drop further away from the Penalto lift station, can it be deduced because they're stronger at the PLS? Penalto lift station, the source is Echo Vista. Number three, the jetting and cleaning of pipe that's mentioned in the report, is that something that can be carried out by Tonny Town Water and Sewer? Are we doing it at the intervals that have been suggested? And I think you suggested every six months in the report. Uh, number four, were the dark, thick, and waxy, that's a quote, uh, from the report, buildups on the Penalto manholes tested? If not, can they be? If they were, I didn't include this, I'm throwing this in here at the last minute. If they were, what were the results of those tests? Number five, um, and I think I know the answer to this, but I'll let you answer it anyway. You probably have. Is Tonny Town responsible for the air scrubbers that are at the lift station? And number six, uh, I know this question was gonna come up, the cost of the required mediations that were listed on pages seventeen through twenty. And, um, you all know, this is like a four-hundred-page report, uh, so, but, uh, I think the guts of it was one through twenty. And, uh, there's a lot in there. I know it took you a lot of time to do this. Uh, it's, uh, good information to have. Appreciate the work.
Sure.
Now, I'll turn it over to you.
Uh-oh. So, um, thank you, Mike, and, uh, good evening, Council. Uh, earlier this summer, ADQ reached out to the Tonny Town Water Department and asked, um, due to the numerous odor complaints in the area, to do a sewer health evaluation to see what's going on with the sewer system. Uh, they did ask to look at five different categories, uh, during the evaluation. That was ammonia characterization, measuring the, uh, ammonia concentrations in the waste streams, uh, across the sewer system, a structural condition assessment, an odor and safety review, document, and investigate odor complaints in the area, uh, mitigation and remediation planning, and then, uh, a regulatory compliance review. Um, over the summer, uh, we surveyed, uh, over seventy-five manholes, several miles of sewer vein. Um, we camered, uh, the sewer system between Echo Vista and the Penalto lift station, as well as, uh, coordinated with GTS to water qualit, water quality testing in the area. Um, all that data's been put into about a five-hundred-page report, so I, I'm sure all of you read every single page of that and looked at every picture. But, uh, it is, it is a beast. Um, big results, and I want to be real clear on what we found. This was a evaluation of the sewer system and was not a, uh, odor or, um, air quality survey, right? So I just want to be real clear, this was not an air quality survey, it was a condition assessment of the sewer system. Uh, the big findings is, the sewer system's actually in pretty good shape. So of the manholes, of the seventy-five manhole surveyed, only one was in immediate need of, uh, of, uh, rehabilitation, uh, in the sewer system between, um, the landfill and Penalto. We did, uh, witness a lot of, uh, buildup in the sewer lines, uh, but overall, the system was in pretty good shape. So, um, with that, uh, I might read just a small tidbit, or, one second. Let me get to my recommendations section. Thank you.
Sixteen.
Page sixteen, recommendations. Overall, the system is in fair condition. Um, I want to be real clear here. At this time, we do not recommend implementing a pretreatment program for ammonia on the condition of the sewer system itself. However, we do recommend a phase-two, uh, with more testing and air-related air quality testing. Uh, it is undeniable that a strong odor is present at the Penalto lift station, as well as sanitary infrastructure between Waste Management and the Barrington Lift Station, which is the last lift station that leaves the city. So that means that odor's been detected all the way across the collection system. Uh, based on numerous complaints filed with ADQ, this odor is not only a major nuisance impacting the quality of life of property odors around the compromised infrastructure, but also may having health impacts as well. Air quality testing should be conducted to identify specific chemicals and constituents causing the odor, and a pretreatment program directed at removing these constituents should be implemented at the source. So that was my recommendation to go, to kind of just segue into some of your questions. Um, the air quali, air quality testing's gonna be a little bit out of my area of expertise. Uh, my recommendation would be to engage with an air quality professional to provide a recommendation for testing, not only ammonia, but what else, whatever else could be in that waste stream. Uh, I do also recommend putting a probe right in that wet well, so you know exactly what's coming out and what you're breathing. Um, Mike, you want to remind me what question number two was?
Yeah, because the ammonia concentrations drop further away from the Penalto lift station, this is coming from page eight, can it be deduced that because they're stronger at the Penalto lift station, the source...
Unequivocally.
Okay, thank you. Number three, the jetting and, uh, jetting and cleaning, something that, uh, I suppose are some...
The Water and Sewer Department do have a jetter. I don't think it's large enough to do the, the eight-inch diameter water mains. I know typically when they do jetting, they do, they do sub that out. And I would, I, I think, uh, in talking with James, they are going to seek, uh, a subcontractor to help with that program.
Thank you. And the dark, thick, waxy buildups?
I have no idea what that is. Uh, when we were looking at it, I was like, man, we should scrape a sample and find out what this is. Be happy to follow up, figure it out.
That'd be nice. Uh, you know, it, it could be, you know, I did learn what fog was, you know, other than the, the haziness that we see on cool waters like today.
Sure, sure, fats, oils, and greases.
So, yeah, that was, uh, good to learn. And I, I suspect that we are responsible for the air scrubbers, right? Because it is...
So the air scrub, I, I did, uh, have a chance to talk with James before this meeting. I know he's in a conference or in Hot Springs, as far as he'd be here, but, uh, the air scrubber is part of the lift station that was turned over to the city for operations and maintenance. Uh, I think the better question, and we heard some comments tonight about the pilot system in relation to the carbon chicken and the activated carbon media that goes in that air scrubber, uh, better question is, how much does that cost? And, uh, I, I'm probably misquoting it, but I think that was about thirty-six hundred dollars a month. So say four thousand dollars a month to replace that media on a frequent basis. Uh, I know James had conversations with Waste Management and they're about that cost and that they would cover it to keep that air scrubber in operation or in better operation should this pilot operation show some success.
Okay. And the cost of the, all the, the three pages of remediation.
Right, so it, you know, some of the manholes, uh, had a range of, uh, structural issues. Some had bad tops that need the, the rims replaced, others had, uh, were missing ground and service line connections, which is not related to Waste Management. Uh, there was some root penetration under the concrete walls. Uh, overall, you know, uh, any of those fixes is gonna be a thousand, two thousand bucks. The bigger one is to take a manhole offline, scrub the inside, and then do an epoxy lining. You know, that's probably looking closer to six to seven thousand dollars a manhole. So if you look at the whole thing, you know, it's probably the tens of thousands to do the whole system from point A to B of all the manholes we surveyed.
So like, uh, on page seventeen, manhole has significant buildup around interior walls, highly corroded, taken offline, that's the six to seven thousand dollar...
Yeah, yeah. And so I think I identified five, with one being needs to happen immediately.
So when you say tens of thousands, we're talking what, fifty? Because you get ten of those, you know, we get into a hundred thousand, Zach.
Twenty, twenty, I just write, uh, twenty to thirty probably would be my initial guess. I know that, uh, James is gonna, uh, starting to work on a cost, so we can get a hard number for you here pretty soon on what that would take.
Okay, thank you.
Citizen comment?
Mark, Calcany twelve, six forty-two Arbor Acres. Um, if Waste Management won't pretreat it, and they're talking about maybe going into, with Tonny Town on the cost, why wouldn't we get it trucked out? Put it in a tanker? Avoid that going down that, uh, lift station. Can it not be tankered out? Is that something? I don't know if you've compared the cost of what he just explained versus the cost of tankering it out. That way, it doesn't go through the lift station, it goes right to, I guess, is it NACA where it goes to?
So, you know, on the subject, I want to thank y'all for bringing this up. I also, I also, uh, wanted this on the agenda, so I, um, I sent it into the CT and, and Megan. Uh, we've got code, in our code fifty-two da, or point oh-two-six, uh, talking about our pretreatment measures and talking about a controlling authority, um, that can restrict the discharge, uh, during peak flow periods, uh, designate certain waste waters to be discharged only to specialty sewers. Um, and when you look into the definition of a controlling authority, we've got an ordinance on the books, ordinance twenty-fifteen dash zero-one dash five oh-six. And if you look in there, it says that the controlling authority is the City Council. And with that being said, I feel like we've got some, some teeth in the fight to where we can regulate, um, and enforce Waste Management to help with some of this pretreatment costs and, uh, you know, take responsibility on helping us out with this.
Mr. Wagner? Correct, you are, Mr. Montez, and that's been there since two thousand and five. I don't understand all the deliberations about the lift station and what we're doing. The source of the Leach Eight is from landfill. You, as the control authority, since two thousand and five, actually, in two thousand and five, it was Tonny Town Water and Sewer Commission, which I was the chairman of. But the law has changed when, two thousand and ten, I think, when y'all become the controlling authority, you've got every right in the world to require the source to pretreat. So I don't know what we're beating around all the bush. It's a matter of if you've got the power and you can tell Waste Management or whatever industrial generator of Leach Eight to pretreat it. So what are we talking about, people?
Kind of the love at eighteen seven oh-two, Clearwater. As you heard, because of incompetent leadership at the time, they did not request the proper treatment before it was implemented. So shut it off. They hauled it out before in trucks. You don't need to continue to allow people to be exposed to these issues. Shut it off, and then they can figure out how they get their money to pretreat it, make it right, and get it to the right place.
Now that we got y'all's attention, Tammy Graham, nineteen eighty-four, South Penalto Road. I did want to point something out on Zach's most wonderful paper. Um, his testing went from, uh, ooh, August first through the seventh, but it got worse, it got way worse after that, about two nights before the last city council meeting, when we were fussing, as usual. Um, it got so bad, it was coming in, it was night, nighttime, I was in the bed, and I had to put my covers over my face, because my eyes were burning and my nose was burning. Thing about ammonia, it goes to the mucosa and it basically corrodes it. I mean, it's, it's corrosive. Uh, it was god-awful. So if you want to look at the, the highest part per million in the water that he sampled, it's fourteen hundred. I don't know how high it got after that, but it got higher and it was getting bad. That night, we came up here and we're fussing and hollering, and then the article came out in the paper, it was amazing. It got so much better down there. It did, it was like a miracle. Okay? So if they can make it better, they can keep it better. But I really hope that it's done right. And y'all don't act like a, y'all don't, I hope y'all don't see a squirrel and get your attention somewhere else, and then it comes back. Hold their feet to the fire if you've got the authority to do it. And on that, uh, carbon chicken deal, I hate to beat them up, but I did have some words with them when they were down at the lift station, and it sounded to me like a sales job. I asked them, what is your background? You've got a BS in soil science. There was a guy there that was a biochemist. I said, well, tell me what research has been done on this, on the lift station? Well, ma'am, this is research and development. So, I pull this, Arkansas Pollution Control and Ecology Commission, is your permitting criteria violations. No persons shall construct, install, alter, or modify or operate any disposal system or any part thereof or any existence, yada, yada, yada. And my question is this, if this carbon chicken thing is in research and development, how is that not considered a modification? And if it is a modification, has, uh, has these people been contacted? Arkansas Pollution Control on the permit part end of it? I don't know, but they ought to be. Don't go messing with something that is gonna affect our life, uh, just because some good old boy down the road wants to experiment so we can get his product out there. Thank you.
Kristin Lohan, four five eight Steel Road, Tonny Town, Arkansas, seven two seven six two six twenty, Steel Road, Tonny Town, Arkansas, seven two seven six two, Via Torre Avenue, eight eight six, Unit D, Tonny Town, Arkansas, seven two seven six two. Those are the addresses. I have more, though. On my board and on my shareholders, I have a lot of people, actually, there's twelve other than me, in those is Rodney Williams. He teaches civil engineering at the University of Arkansas Water. Um, one of them is a biologist, name is Steve Barlow. He goes around and basically does bird sanctuaries and, um, he works for wildlife with the government. Actually, he doesn't do it anymore now, he's retired, but he does things for my company. Um, one of them's Alan Hallworth, and he's got a, we have, I own fifty percent of a patent that could cure most of this problem, but it sounds like your town has a pretty good handle on it. I was gonna do this last year and the year before that, but I was sick and dying, and I'm not now. But I think that I've sat and watched my parents come to these meetings over and over again, and I've lived in this town on and off, but mostly on, for, I don't know, over thirty years. And I think that he's right when he said incompetent, um, at some point in time, because you guys are the council that controls what happens at that dump. We all remember when it went in and we were thinking then, that that's gonna bring a lot of money to the city in city taxes, but what are the secondary effects of the farmland and the animals? And isn't the United States, isn't our largest GMP and GDP, isn't it agriculture? And if you affect the soil and the water, aren't you affecting what you're producing on it? Isn't that the case? And I'm fairly sure that's the case. And then you eat that, and then doesn't it go into your body? I mean, you, you guys are talking about water and so, you guys are talking about water and air. I mean, you're feeding the rest, Tyson Chicken is feeding the whole world, the whole world. I mean, is this not an issue? It should be a worldwide issue. In fact, the EPA should be here, but that's all I have to say about that.
I can just make a note to the council, since there's been several comments. I will tell you that James and I are working on, uh, with, uh, Justin about sending a letter to Waste Management about the pretreatment facility that everybody's been talking about. It's interesting that people are coming up and telling us that, you know, twenty years ago, you could have, you could actually have had them do pretreatment, but my understanding is, is they didn't do it. It would've been nice if they would've had the pretreatment back in two thousand and five, when this was all implemented and we wouldn't have to be dealing with it. But we are working on it. I do have, there's a huge ordinance that will have to be implemented, which is a pretreatment ordinance. Uh, I've got a copy of that from Silent Springs. I also got an application, so there's gonna be a process that'll happen. It's not gonna happen tomorrow. Um, so we get a letter of the damn to Waste Management indicating that they're gonna be required to put the pretreatment. Um, we'll have to do some testing on what that stuff is and what's actually is going to be limited to it. So from all these comments that are being had, we, we, we know that and we are acting on it. So I want the council to know that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So from all these comments that are being had, we, we, we know that, and we are acting on it. So I want the council to know that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no more comments, I guess we'll move on. To council.
For what?
You want council, you have any comments to make further?
I mean, I just, again, would say, if you're looking, if you're going to go down the road, I would just look at 31.04, the Water and Sewer Department section in our code, and look at this ordinance, 2015 dash 001 dash 506. And underneath that, Section 3, it says, "The city council shall retain full and complete control of all properties of every kind and characters belonging to the city of Tonton and used in connections with the waterworks and sewer system, whether subject to exceptions below said property are situated within or without the corporate limits of the city of Tonton." I mean, it's pretty cut and dry when you look at that ordinance and the code 52 dot zero 26 and the pretreatment measures that we have, and it calls us the controlling authority. And it says in Section B of that code, "The controlling authority may require any person discharging into the POTW to install, maintain on their property at their expense a suitable storage and flow control facility to ensure equalization of flow." So I think we've got the teeth to make them do something naturally when we're in a litigation suit with somebody. They don't seem to play ball a lot, so we'll discuss that a little bit later on tonight. But I think if Mr. Latham's got discussions going, I feel like we've, we're in the right step, but if we need to act as a council on anything behalf to, you know, show them we mean business, I feel like we should move that to city council.
Okay, great. We can say absolutely right now or absolutely a little later? All right. Anyone else on that?
Just one more comment, 52.025, I think the one before the one you mentioned, I think actually gives that authority to, for us to do the pretreatment. So just to bolster in your argument there a little bit, Mr. Eitman, I don't know if you.
One more thing to add, a complicating factor in this is that there's a contract from 2010 that James and Mark and I met about a week or two ago that I've been reviewing. We've been gathering a lot of information on it, but that contract is in effect. It has to do with when the landfill, when Eco Vista built the sewer line and the, the lift station, it obligates the city to take the effluent. And I do not think it impacts our ability to require pretreatment. In fact, I think it requires them to abide by the city's ordinances, but that's a complicating factor. And so we're, we are reviewing that, but I just wanted to point that out there, that there are some, some things to navigate here.
Is that the sewer line construction and use contract?
Yes.
And which paragraph is that under? About the effluent?
I'll have to look and see, let me, let me, we were talking about it, it's kind of hard to find.
Got some notes on this. I don't have everything highlighted in it, but yeah, I'm familiar with the contract.
You know, that just has another part to it that we, we needed to take into account.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on. We have a discussion on police vehicles. Mr. Jensen?
Short discussion, just wanted to make you aware, we had, earlier this year, we had a unit that was involved in an accident, it was declared total loss. Last Monday, we had a unit that was hit by another vehicle responding to an accident. We're still waiting to hear, it looks like that one should be repairable. It's going to be very close to the threshold, so it was in disassembly today, pending a couple other areas on it. As of today, it looks like it is repairable, but wanted to make you aware of that and hopefully have some options to look at presented next month. We do have two vehicles that have been our spare units. Those have been through with the hell damage, while our units have been cycled through for repairs on that, as well as the units that have been in the accidents. Those have seen extensive use, already sitting at, they're both 2017 year models, so those, the repair cost to keep those operational is starting to catch up to us. So we'll try to have next month some options before you on hopefully a replacement there with some trade-in on some of those spare units to offset that. So just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a discussion on Washington County Regional Ambulance Authority inter-local agreement. The mayor, I don't know, is, Mark, are you prepared at all to talk about that? Ryan's not here.
I bet Mr. Eitman could fill it. This is just kind of a formality, we did this, well, I wasn't on council, I think this is a four-year agreement, I wasn't on council then, but I think this is just something that is renewing our service contract with Central EMS.
That is correct. It's been provided to all the cities where Central EMS operates, it's the interlocal agreement that, that governs that operation, that's been, that's been provided. The, the agreement also breaks out the obligations of cost, that's essentially on a per capita type of, type of arrangement, like it's been, so as population changes, that, that adjusts somewhat, but this is somewhat similar to previous, previous agreements and has been distributed to all the cities to review. I've reviewed and advised the mayor that eventually it would need to be decided upon, approved by, by this body.
Is there a deadline?
That I don't know. She may know that because of the communication, but it looks like it dated 2025, so, but do you see something else?
Like, maybe. No, I don't, sorry.
Citizen comment?
Mike, the term of the agreement runs from January 1, 2026. So I assume that's the.
Thank you. So we probably, I mean, we can vote on it, obviously, next council meeting.
Yeah, oh, yes, yes. Or if there are issues, even potentially another, another meeting, but we just want to make sure and get it in front of you.
Council, do you see anything? I mean, yes, the, the cost went up some, but what hasn't? And as far as I'm concerned, if, we've got to have ambulance service, and it is what it is.
Well, and we've seen too, you know, just from the, our reports that we get every month from Chief Jensen and Chief Crew, the number of responses that they're having to take has gone up. I think fire department's gone up 25, 35% this year in the number of calls, service calls that they've been sent out on. So maybe at some point in time, if we get growing, we get our own ambulances, but those things are very expensive.
It would be nice, but.
They're very, very, very expensive.
Absolutely.
So it's, that would be nice.
So are we going to move this on to the next meeting, or?
I would make a motion to move it on to the city council, yes.
Move it on to city council, okay. And you second, Amber?
I do have a question before we vote, if you guys don't mind, if you'll engage me for a sec. So all these are Washington County cities, but some of them are pretty far flung from us. So are they only here, Mr. Eitman, because they're, they're part of the county?
They're serviced by. All these cities receive service from Central EMS.
Sure, I understand that, but I mean, Lincoln isn't, isn't going to assist us up here, nor are we likely to assist them should there be a problem, correct?
Correct.
So, but it's, it's just part of the, the new, what is it called now? The Washington County Regional Ambulance Authority? So as part of that WCRAA, it, it just all goes together?
Yes, Central EMS serves all these communities, and so they stage, and I don't know if Chief Crew is here, he could, he could probably explain this a little better, but, you know, they stage ambulances throughout the area, the territory, I believe we have one here, right?
Yes.
That service, and so I may not be answering that right, but all of these, you know, are in the response area for Central EMS, and all these communities pay into it.
Okay. No, I know it's all the same company, but I mean, why does every city have to sign this? Why do we have to sign one for Elkins? Why do they have to sign one for us?
Oh, I see. So every city has to sign it? There is a law called the Interlocal Agreement Act, that when you have kind of mutual service agreements between cities or cities and counties and those sort of things, there's an approval process for that where the governing bodies, so the court will approve this, for the county, and the city councils for all the different, different cities will approve, and this is following that process. The.
I, I think I understand that. I, I don't want you to run into a rabbit hole on my, on my behalf, but I mean, in places like Greenland or Lincoln or Winslow, for example, or even West Fork, those are so far flung. I mean, is it just part and parcel? I know we've done this year after year, but they're not likely to engage to help us should there be a problem or vice versa because of their proximity to us. Is that correct?
This doesn't obligate the cities to help each other. This obligates, this is an agreement amongst the cities to use the, the Central EMS.
Okay, so it's just saying that each of these cities are going to use what was called Central EMS, now the Washington County Regional Ambulance Authority?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just, just for kicks and giggles, I don't know if you happen to look at the square miles. Our, our city, our lovely town is second only to Fayetteville in size. Okay, next, we have a discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you are correct, roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Moving on, and this will be the last one before we take a five-minute break, a discussion on Waste Management hosting fees, and that would have been the mayor also, but I think Mark is going to take over on this one.
I'll try to help you guys out. As you know, there was a law passed thanks to Ms. Lundstrom, she was a big pusher of this, that the host city that would be hosting a landfill would be able to charge $2.50 per ton. Currently, what the city's receiving right now is 55 cents a ton. I would strongly suggest that the city go ahead and push the maximum, $2.50 that will be submitted for that. Just to give you a kind of ballpark for you, so you'll know how much money that is, currently probably a little less than $300,000 that you're collecting on your 55 cents.
If you go to 250, I mean, I mean, four times that? I'm not good at math, but that's 1.23.
Yeah, yeah. Questions?
Citizen comment? Mr. Calcagni?
I don't know if this is, and you tell me whether this is the time for this or not, but Steve Unger, he wanted me to share something with the council and with the city, and it was about a test that a well-known doctor did about the last air test. And so I don't know if this is a good time, or if it's, I could stay within three minutes, or should I wait till the last V? I can wait till the last V, if that's okay, then I'll do that, but I'll keep you in suspense.
Okay, thanks. Only thing I didn't see on here, what, unless I missed, when do we negotiate this?
It's not a negotiation.
Oh, okay, okay, so it's, it's just.
It requires you guys to negotiate, all we have to do.
My understanding is just notified by letter, certified letter to.
So we could do it at the next council meeting?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. That seems like a no-brainer. So we need to, but we don't have a resolution, is it a resolution? We just do, we just say, hey?
Justin, we're going to start? There'll be a, my understanding, and we met about this a couple weeks ago, is that we would have a new host fee agreement that would be approved by resolution by this council.
So we don't have a resolution, so that'll have to come up at the next Cal?
Probably, yes, because that needs to be, the host fee agreement needs to be drafted along with the resolution. I think we were going, if I recall our discussion, Mark, I think we were, there was going to be some outreach to Waste Management about it before adoption here, so it probably would be a November, November meeting.
Can I formally request that that be placed on the Cal now?
I will even second that formal request.
I mean, why do we need to reach out to Waste Management before? It probably is good faith, good neighbor effort. Well, we can, we can be.
I, I appreciate the thought, but there's a, there's a house bill on the books now, it's passed, sorry, it's a house bill, it's passed. They know that it's $2.50. I, I think they would presume that we would go to the maximum, $2.50. If we have the right to do it, why not just make a motion now that we take it to city council? In fact, I'll make a motion that we raise it to $2.50 a ton and send it to city council.
If that's legal, I'm, I'll second it, but.
But we'll have to have the resolution in, in place. For city council?
Yeah.
I mean, if, if that, Mr. Latham, can we contact Waste Management and get? So now we have.
I mean, we have a law that would supersede any resolution or ordinance that we have. Is that not right, Mr. Eitman? State law?
Yes, the state law, I don't have it right in front of me, but it has a provision that the host fee agreement can only last for a certain number of years, it has to be re-upped, and it has a little bit of range on how, how that occurs, so they can't, you know, they can't go stale. So ours has been, the latest one's been in effect for quite some time. Mark, do you remember the date of the last one that we talked about? It's been five, five, six years, something of that nature. So it's time to, to redo that.
Last time we went up a nickel.
Yeah, it went from 50 to 55 cents, that's right.
Okay. Talk about some neighborly love.
But there was no ability, you know, back then, there was no ability to, for us to require a host fee agreement, and that was, it was sort of done out of, you know, basically, yeah, good faith or an obligation, yeah.
So. I think that's.
Sorry, sometimes it seems like we're ignoring you, we cannot.
So can we move forward and vote? If you find out otherwise that we can't do this, I mean, we'll obviously do it at the next Cal, but if, I think all of us would be in, well, we haven't voted on it yet, but we've made the motion to send it to, up the host fees at the next council meeting, because I think this law would give us a leg to stand on there, maybe not, but you might have to do some research, I don't know.
Right, I mean, I think one of the reasons to afford that time was to see, A, if there's going to be an issue, so we can, we can deal with it, but B, to afford due process. Doesn't give somebody notice, an opportunity to be heard. Could we afford due process in October? Probably, we'd have to work pretty quickly, but, but that was the reason for saying that maybe, you know, maybe it would come in the November meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, my motion's on the table.
And I give him a second.
If it can get done, roll call.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, as I promised, we are going to have a five-minute pause for a cause. Next, we are going to have a discussion to amend city ordinance 30.05 and 30.06, prayer and public comment procedures. Danny?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I took the pleasure of creating this memo and a draft ordinance, hoping that legal has looked that over, you know, if there's any revisions in there, they point those out to us. But essentially, I brought this up to adopt an ordinance that adds prayer immediately after roll call rather than before the meeting and places public comment, or keeps public comment by citizens of Tawny Town earlier in the meeting and moves and creates a second public comment section for non-residents to end the agenda. And the rationale behind this is adding invocation or prayer after roll call provides an orderly and solemn start to the proceedings without delay of core business. Prioritizing residents, keeping citizens' comments early ensures that residents' input is heard before deliberation of any new business, or if there's old business, it comes in before that as well. And then scheduling non-residents' comments at the end preserves the meeting's flow while providing the meaningful opportunity to speak, you know, on their business. Codifying the order removes ambiguity and supports consistent agenda preparation and chairing.
Citizen comment.
I, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with any of it. I'm a First Amendment guy. I say that all the time. I think people have a right to speak. I do understand that there should be primacy, I suspect, for taxpayers. I mean, how do we determine that? And, and for business owners. I don't, I don't want to disenfranchise anybody. So I don't want to pick on what you've got here because you've got something that I don't. Thank you for bringing something forward. But I'm guessing that the idea is that, am I right there, that there's a, there's a primacy to...
Essentially, yes. You know, and I brought this up, this in another Cal, brought up the discussion of public comment and what we can do to maintain, you know, a code of conduct here in the room. And I think separating the comment section apart is going to, would help with that. It still allows the freedom of speech amongst all citizens, but it would just create a space, a buffer between those two.
Right. But we already have a code of conduct, and if, if we will utilize the code of conduct, that, that's the matter. I mean, as, as you all know, I have been cursed at in this room with the most vile epithets you can imagine, and, and it's allowed to stand depending on where those words come from. So I think, if I understand correctly, and perhaps our attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that any one of us can raise a point of order. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So it doesn't have to simply be the chairman or the mayor, but if, if, if something breaks that code of conduct, then we can raise a point of order at that point. And then what happens?
Well, then typically, the chair would, would try to resolve the point of order. Ultimately, if it can't be resolved, there can be a vote of the council to resolve it. You know, we have a very informal process, right? But the rules that govern the conduct are, are crucial, are critical. So I think in most cases, kind of if, if the council member stops and points it out, the, you know, the chair, whether it's planning commission or Larry or Mayor, you know, will be alerted to it and can say something at that, at that point. But ultimately, you know, the, you know, the council, the council sets its rules, it can, it can, it can change its rules on the fly, too. But, but I think that's the correct procedure, and I think 99% of the time that resolves the issue.
Okay. Now, with that, with that said, Mr. Montez, that, I, I don't mean to say that, that I'm opposed to the changes that are proposed here, but these changes don't fix anything unless we maintain the proper rules and procedures and conduct in meetings.
Correct. So with that, I mean, we can make the change and then just try to enforce it ourselves. I mean, if you, if you're wanting to invoke that any council member up here can call a point of order and call it out, then I suggest if you see those, you call it out.
Well, I'm not trying to invoke anything. I, I just believe that that is the current...
Sure.
That, that is the way that that operates.
I just feel that this would, this would help create that buffer in between comments and hopefully keep some, some instances from happening. I mean, I don't know if you were a part of the planning commission meeting the other night.
I have, I, I, yeah, I, I did see the...
It's just, it's just spreading from Cal to city council to planning commission. I mean...
I have, I have a thought, too, and I, this looks great, so I do appreciate the work that you put into it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I didn't bring anything.
Thank you.
I, I actually would love to see all the comments at the end of the meeting. You know, citizens get comments during or right before a vote anyway, so we would hear their opinions on, on any matter that we're about to vote on. And I just, I think moving it to the end of the meeting can set a different tone for the meeting as well, all comments.
Yeah. Like I said, I, I brought this up in another Cal, and we were supposed to have a work session, and I think things kind of just fell to the wayside, so I just took it upon myself to...
I do think we should have comments. We should always hear what, what needs to be said, so...
So council member Ibarra, just to clarify your, your comments, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with that either, but if, if, if there are issues being voted on, you, you said citizen comments.
Pertaining to that issue.
Right. But do you literally mean citizen comments or public comments?
Just public.
Public comments.
It's just public comments.
Right, but, but I mean, if we're making changes...
I'd like to clarify, it should really be a citizen that's making the comments.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not trying to clarify anything. I, I want, I wanted you to clarify what you meant.
Question for me.
Sure, yes, ma'am.
I would say that if, I, I think that if it's a citizen should have the say in what we're about to vote on, on each item, but public comments can be for all.
Thank, thank you.
I'm not sure I followed that.
What I think his question was is, is when we're at each item that we're voting on...
Right.
And citizens can come up and...
Right.
Give their thoughts on what we're about to vote on.
Mm-hmm.
Is that open to any comment from citizen or non-citizen?
I got you.
Or just citizen of Tawny Town?
I got you. I didn't understand if you were trying to move, you know, M to I on the proposed, you know, I, I think the most important thing, I'm willing to try any, anything that we think is going to help the flow of the meeting. Obviously, the most important thing is that we're not trying to squelch anybody's opportunity to speak here. You know, the municipal leagues giving guidance on this, we don't have to allow citizen comments at all, you know, per Arkansas law. So, you know, we're doing it, and we know things have gotten heated in here from time to time, and that's okay. People are passionate, and it's good to see passion and involvement with the city. We can reset this if this doesn't work, or if we don't like how it's going, it can be reset. We're supposed to set the order of meetings at the first meeting of the year anyway. I think that's in our code. So, you know, I'm willing to give this a try. We're not stepping on anybody's right to speak. We still are allowing people to come up and, and say what they need to say. So do you want to, or, so you're okay with the, the proposed ordinance? You just, you want to add more teeth to it as far as citizen comments on business items? Is that, is that kind of what you're suggesting?
Talking to him.
I'm talking to you, Ms. Ibarra.
Just changing the comments to the end, all comments at the end.
All comments at the end.
Except for, obviously, you can still comment after each item pertaining to each item we're voting on, but when it comes to general citizen comments...
I got you.
That have nothing to do with the agenda, that's at the end.
I'm fine with that, too.
And my only thing, we were talking about citizens or just Mr. Zaga, for instance, if we hold it to citizens only, I think it ought to be open to anybody. Because if we say citizens only, I...
You mean pertaining to the item that we're getting ready to vote on?
Yes, if, if there, yes, because there may be somebody, and I'm not even sure that the, that, the dog place is in the city limits. I'm not sure. So, you know, but...
I'm not having that problem with that.
So at that point, we would just be keeping the, the amendment here?
Yeah, amendment, but, but I'm just saying, as far as allowing, you know, public...
At any discussion.
If I say citizen comment or public comment on anything that we are discussing.
Yeah. I, I can see where that could become a, a problem if you've got something there or you've got a lawyer that isn't a resident of Tawny Town.
But her client was.
Yeah.
Understand.
That's one thought, but he's talking about even like the dog.
Yeah. I see what you're saying.
That came, the grooming company that came in. If it's not in the city limits, then at that point, but who's going to regulate that? So I kind of agree. So I would just say we, we pass this ordinance and move this on to city council. It keeps that part open for interpretation. So I'll make a motion that we move this ordinance to city council.
The changes or as it is?
As it is. I don't think, I don't think we need to mess with the, the comment section.
Which comment? Which comment section? I'm sorry. So you, you still want H to say public comment by citizens of Tawny Town?
Correct. And then over...
And you want them separated?
Correct.
And you would like M to be public comment by non-residents?
Mm-hmm. And then if there's old business and new business with discussion items on there and there's a comment section when those, that'll be open to anybody.
So old business and new business open to whomever wants to speak?
Correct. Yeah, there's no one, there's no revisions there.
Citizens or non-citizens.
Correct. That way you don't have that issue with...
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with any of it, but if that's the case, then, then why? Why make, why make this change at all?
And then again, if, if you want it, if you, I mean, if you want to add it in there, we can follow those same principles in there.
I, I'm...
On old business and new business.
Sure.
Then you're starting a line of...
I'm not advocating for any of it, but I do, I do want to properly understand your concerns, and I believe council member Ibarra has, has a valid point as well. I just want to make sure that if, if there's a reason for the change, that we are adopting it for the reason that you were hoping for.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't want to disenfranchise anybody. There was a, a comment earlier, somebody said, there are people in this room, or I think it was insinuated that it was the council that doesn't want them to speak. That's certainly not me. I don't think it's any of you either. But I, I do believe that there may be some validity to having a primacy for those who pay taxes here and/or are business owners here. If I, if I go to Bentonville and, and go to make comments, they, they likely have less interest in what I have to say. If I go to St. Louis, I suspect they don't care much about what I have to say as a non-taxpaying citizen.
Danny, if I can kind of...
Yeah, please.
...clear one a little bit. Here's, here's my comment, as is that if you allow anybody in the public comment at the beginning, could influence your vote if it doesn't pay your tax, doesn't pay your salary?
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah.
That's what we're trying to say. If you're going to have it, have a citizen's comment at the beginning, and if somebody wants to come in that doesn't live in this city, doesn't pay my salary, that wants to comment on something, they're not influencing your vote.
Right.
Okay? So that's why this is a good scenario. A lot of people, I mean, I...
Yeah.
Many cities don't even allow public comment.
Sure. No, I, I understand that. And again, I'm not opposed to it, but if, but if then on every bullet point item, anybody can speak, and anybody who speaks is not impacting my vote because they're not paying my salary right now.
Yeah. Correct.
I, I have one, one other question, and it's probably really not a very smart question, but you say regular meetings of city council, are you including Cal in?
Both Cal and city council, yeah. Yeah.
And the, and the order would be a little different, obviously, because those meetings are slightly different, right?
Correct. Yeah. But I mean, I see your all's point. I mean, if you want to invoke something in item, you know, if you look at the new list, if we were to approve this ordinance, item I and item J, that's old business and new business, and put a clause in there that says, you know, first shall come public comment from city, citizens of Tawny Town, and then second shall be comments from non-residents or anything in business is only to be discussed by citizens of Tawny Town. All comments from non-residents shall be at the, at the bottom, at the end, at section M.
Comment?
In the 18702 Clearwater Road, and I believe this discussion is a lot because of me, but anyway, what's the difference in taxpaying citizen and a public comments when the, the landfill is the only time I comment, most of the time, because the rest of it's none of my business, but the landfill affects me more than some of the taxpaying citizens other than the mayor, you know, and people down that way? So how does that, you know, what's the big deal? Do you just need to tell me to sit down and shut up or what? You know? I hear all kinds of comments in the back. There's a couple of things I could say about them, too, so, you know. Anyway, I don't understand, you know, if I'm doing wrong, talk to me. Give me a call, you know? You ain't going to change the world because I'm upset because y'all killing me, you know, or dubs killing me. If I'm wrong, call me. I'm honest with you. I pray, but I'll tell you.
Tammy Gray, I'm 1984 South Panalto Road. I grew up in Mississippi back when, when you went to school, you knew every teacher and you knew what you could get away with. And there were some teachers, you'd go in their class, and you could do anything you wanted because there were no consequences. And there was one teacher who taught civics. She was a World War II Army nurse. You went in, you sat down, you shut up, and we showed her a lot of respect, and we knew where the boundaries were. So my suggestion is if I get out of line and I'm disrespectful, please call that man at the doorway and haul me out, and establish your boundaries and keep them firm. And then folks will learn pretty quickly. It will not be tolerated. And I have sat here and watched a lot tolerate, be tolerated. And when I first started showing up, I probably did get out of line, and, and it wasn't appropriate, and for that I do apologize. But boundaries, enforce your behavior expectations on all of us quickly, consistently. Thank you.
If I'm understanding it correctly, you're just moving the non-citizens to the end. Mike Zippo, 900 South Panalto. So if my memory serves me correctly, when I was on the council years ago, it was just citizens of Tawny Town comments. I don't think it was open to the public, if my memory serves me correctly. As long as everybody gets a time to talk, you put citizens in the first and the nonsense, I don't think it's going to make, I mean, I don't see, oh, if you don't, if it doesn't work out, you can go back to the other...
work out, you can go back to the other way, you can change it. Y'all can make the rules, that's what y'all do. I mean, you can make the rules, if it works out better, works out better. It, uh, you know, Daniel's got an idea to try to make it better, and it may be worth a, a shot to try it out.
Mick Wagner, 409 Pendel. Uh, to build on what Mr. Lathan brought, I thought was an excellent point.
Yeah.
In that I don't think that anybody, uh, should be deprived, first of all, First Amendment, that everybody should comment, however, to Mr. Burris's point, a primacy of the people, while we say we all pay taxes, uh, well, a resident pays taxes, a resident has to live by the rules you people make, and a resident is a voter, appeals to you, and if you make a rule that we have to follow, if you pass an impact fee that we have to pay, that John Q Citizen from South Arkansas, or from New York for that matter, has the same level of ability to sit here and talk before y'all conduct business, it seems to me like that what Mr. Montez has provided for y'all's consideration is very prudent. And to Mr. Zupo's point, you're not keeping anybody from talking, you're just giving primacy, to Mr. Burris's point, that the people that have to live by the laws that y'all are making and discussing, and actions that you're taking, certainly is impacted by it a whole lot more than somebody that doesn't live in the city.
Okay, I have a couple of scenarios with this. So you have individuals that may own land in Tonny Town that hasn't been developed, they reside completely somewhere else, so what would you classify them as? The taxpayers? They're not a resident, truly?
They would still pay property taxes, I believe. Sorry, I meant a lot of...
Okay. But they might be a voter because they actually truly reside somewhere else. So also, if we have individuals, you know, that are coming up and wanting to speak like the other attorneys, or, you know, maybe we truly have someone that has a specialty or has more information and is more knowledgeable on one of the subjects that is being presented, that we have requested to come to the meeting, then how are you going to classify them? Like, if you close it to where during each item that it's only going to be citizens only, I, I don't agree with that. So, um, I, yeah. I have oppositions because there are ways that it can negatively impact, and you do need some of that information.
I think if a citizen has counsel like tonight, or a citizen brings an expert witness or, uh, somebody to speak on their behalf, I mean, I think that qualifies as the citizen speaking somewhat.
Through a...
Um, you know, through a proxy or whatever.
So... Your member brings somebody in, sign them in?
Not just, I mean, I think you understand what I'm saying, this, this is, we're not going to bring, you're not going to bring somebody every time to speak at a meeting, but this was a, an exceptional circumstance. We, those of you who come, uh, realize we don't do this on a, uh, we don't have people come, attorneys come speak to us on a regular basis. You know, the most important thing about this is obviously that we're not squashing anyone's, uh, ability to speak, and the primacy argument is a, is a pretty good argument. Um, I'm willing to try it, I don't have anything else to offer in, uh, um, as a rebuttal ordinance for, I, I mean, it's, it's well thought out, well laid out. We can try it, if we don't like it, if it's not making any bit of a difference, we go back to the old rules.
Yeah.
It's, it's simple.
So, to me, the only thing that's really changing is the placement of the prayer and the separation of comments.
Right.
That's the only thing that's changed.
Correct, and that's kind of how I hi- I highlighted my part in the packet, and so the yellow part at the top is prayer, and then you've got public comments by citizens of Tonny Town, and then at the bottom you have public comment by non-residents.
So, we have a motion. I have not heard a second.
I'll make that second.
Roll call.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Is there an emergency clause on that?
Yes, sir. Well, it doesn't have to go into effect until the...
Right, but I, exactly. Okay.
And, uh, and then, um, Mr. Montez, if I may ask, would you be willing to, uh, have as part of the next packet the, the draft of what the Cal and the city council meetings would look like? I know that seems like a small point, but when I went to add prayer, uh, it went to one and not the other.
Gotcha, and then we had to, okay.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a discussion of the KNWA, 10-125 report on illegal exaction lawsuit and other legal cases city council is unaware of. Mr. Montez?
Yeah, this was, um, when I got the, uh, KNWA report, uh, and seen that on social media on September 30th, it looks like it was posted, um, that was the first I had heard of any kind of, uh, development with this case, and then, you know, I've heard through some public comments that we've had, that we have some other litigation that the city's involved in, um, that I'm just not privy to, so I wanted to bring this up and give our legal council some, an opportunity to bring us up to speed on any legal, uh, lawsuits that the city's involved in, that we need to be, um, aware of. You know, I, I feel like we've, we've got a, uh, an obligation to the citizens to have, um, the information of these lawsuits that are brought to us, um, to the forefront of our mind, uh, not after a determination's been made and a judgment's been called upon, um, but before any actions taken. So this was kind of a slap in the face, not only for the city of Tonny Town, um, but I feel for, you know, the council, too, in, um, not being aware of this event. Um, I could be in the minority, I could be the only one that didn't know, um, but I wanted to give the opportunity to legal, to bring us up to speed on anything else that's out there, um, that we could be looking at, uh, new, new press releases that are going to come out in front of us.
Do you want to start then, uh, council member, with, um, with our city attorney?
Sure.
Okay, so this case, uh, that's in the KNWA, KNWA deal, uh, was lawsuit that was brought by, uh, Ms. Wagner, uh, the, the legal counsel defending the city was with the municipal league, her name's Sarah Monahan. It's the type of case that the municipal league takes. The city participates in a program called the Municipal League Defense Program, where we pay a premium, um, uh, for, uh, defense, um, uh, services, litigation defense services related to certain types of cases, illegal exactions, um, are one of those types of cases. So she took the, uh, she took the case about, I'm losing my time, but several weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, she contacted me, uh, to let me know that she was working on a settlement. If you recall, this is the case regarding, uh, the payment of the attorney's fees that was mentioned earlier for Mr. Mays in Little Rock. Um, the, uh, those attorney's fees were paid, I believe, in 2024. Um, the reimbursement to the city occurred in November, if I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, occurred in November of 2024. The action was brought after that. Um, the, um, the settlement, uh, that Ms. Monahan, um, uh, worked on dismissed the city. Uh, the individuals who were sued were the city and, and, um, and the mayor. It dismissed the city, um, and, um, it, uh, there, there's a, a judgment or an agreed order that was, uh, put into, uh, effect and where, uh, you know, the mayor agreed, uh, to be conscientious of these expenditures and did not make, uh, an illegal exaction in the future, in that she agreed to pay the attorney's fees, uh, to bring the action, which was $1,500, and she, um, uh, and so that was a case that was resolved a week or two ago, um, that's the subject of this, of this article. Um, the other cases, uh, there are two. One is the REA case, uh, that's Washington Water, that's been filed in, uh, uh, that's in federal court. Uh, that, that, um, case is, is early and is ongoing. Um, I really don't have, I think last meeting, uh, we talked about a, um, James mentioned trial date, um, that had been set, but that's the only thing that's been, uh, that's been set so far. Uh, we're in the discovery period in that case. I, um, I submitted that case for coverage to the municipal league. Um, I'm on that case, working on that, um, uh, but that's being paid for by, uh, the municipal league's defense program. It's not being paid, that defense is not being paid for by the city. Uh, the last case is an FOI case that's brought by, uh, Mr. Wagner. Um, that claim, I'd have to look back and see exactly, but it was filed approximately, uh, in July-ish, um, and it concerns an FOI request, uh, that occurred the previous year, um, in August, around that time, he supplemented, he supplemented the complaint, uh, which is adding a new claim, adding a new complaint, uh, for regarding the FOI request that was current, um, as of that summer. Um, and then, most recently, in September, he supplemented it again regarding a, uh, seeking a release of an investigation, employment investigation report. Um, those supplemental complaints have just been answered, uh, the last one has, and, uh, we have just received discovery on that case. I was over here, uh, last week, working on that, uh, to, uh, to get answers and documents to provide, uh, in, in discovery. So those are the two active cases, um, that are, um, that are ongoing, and, uh, if there are any questions, I'll, I'll be happy to answer.
I, I have one. Uh, was, was any city money used at all in the settlement of, of this most recent case of, of which this article refers?
No.
Um, you know, this past week, I, I was flooded with, uh, questions from citizens about corruption in the mayor's office, and, um, like many of you, I watched numerous news stories, I read several articles about, uh, the event in question, and, uh, in answer to the citizen questions, our city has a legislative branch, which is the city council, and we have an executive branch, who is the mayor. Um, we're not intertwined in most activities unless the mayor chooses to seek our approval for an issue. Some of those she's legally required to ask for, um, and others, uh, less so. Um, many citizens were confused by the mayor's actions, and they were concerned that the issue with the mayor made our city look bad. I've heard that even here in this room tonight. Um, and I, I understand that, um, none of you want the city to look bad, but I don't just care about how the city looks, uh, in the media or elsewhere, I care that the city is full of integrity and excellence. Uh, I don't want a facade, I want facts, I don't want cover-ups, I want competence, I want a commitment to honesty. And so just for clarity, the situation in question, uh, occurred when the mayor illegally paid for private citizens' legal fees with city funds. Uh, while she was not part of that citizens' group, her husband was. So in some of the media comments, she has said, I am not part of it, that is true, but her husband was. Uh, the city council doesn't get line-itemized mayoral spending reports, and so the spending was concealed from council, perhaps not purposefully, but it was. And the mayor's legal opponent in this case, a citizen who discovered her actions, um, offered through his attorney to drop the case if the mayor admitted her guilt in this particular situation, uh, she didn't, uh, break the law, and if, um, his attorney fees would be paid out of her pocket personally. Um, so that was a, a, an ask from the other attorney, and because she was indeed guilty, she rightly accepted the settlement offer, I appreciate that she did that, and as we just heard, no tax dollars were used, no city money was used, uh, the court ordered a settlement, has either already been paid or it will be paid by October 10. Um, I've heard the word transparency used over and over again regarding this issue, and this issue was not transparent. It wasn't transparent to the city council, uh, until the opposing legal party brought it to our attention standing right there at that lectern in a city council meeting. This is not transparency. We can't redefine transparency to only reveal what we desire to reveal, or reveal our actions after we're caught. Our mayor is not expected to know everything, I want you to understand, I, I don't expect that of her, and she will make mistakes, but that's why she has a paid legal counsel, she has a staff of her own hiring and choosing, and we have, as you heard earlier, the Arkansas Municipal League to assist. Um, this isn't the fault of any citizen. Uh, our mayor has every tool necessary to make wise decisions, including our city attorney, who was not consulted. Uh, I am deeply concerned that she has claimed transparency while engaging in unethical behavior, but here's what I do know about the mayor. She admitted her guilt, and she paid the settlement to make things right in the situation, and I thank you for that, Mayor Russell. She's the elected representative of the people, and they deserve integrity and excellence. She is committed to fighting the dangerous effects of waste management in our city, and she fights to protect the health of our citizens, and we appreciate that. And the mayor has a very big full-time task. It's not a job I would ever want to have, but she has an experienced staff who's dedicated to serving our citizens, and she has a legal counsel available at all times if she requests it. Regarding our city's reputation, even if somebody in the city government does something incorrect or corrupt, we still have a fabulous city with tremendous citizens. We have a rich heritage, we have a bright future together, and I'm thankful that our mayor is committed to serving out the rest of her term, and I hope she'll be successful in creating a transparent and upright department going forward as she leans on her legal team and her staff of experts for her last 15 months in office. We know you can do it, Mayor. Unity can only come with integrity and honesty, and I think we can all achieve that if we all do our part.
Mike, anything?
Uh, no, thank you. I've got something later on, a different issue, but...
The only thing I would, uh, ask on your comments, Mr. Burris, is do you have the 18 people that were listed as the private citizens in the group that shows that Mayor Russell, because from what I understood, she was one of the, um, 18 that were in the private citizens group, and I think when, in your, in your comments, you alluded that it was just her husband.
Yes, in, in, in private conversations with me, she has told me that she was not, but I do know that, that her husband was, she may or may not be, I don't know.
Okay.
But I, I know that in public statements, she has made claim that she was not part of that group, which doesn't seem...
You can shed some light.
Mick Wagner, 409 Pendel Avenue. To Mr. Burris's point, whether or not the mayor was or was not, uh, depositions are taken under sworn oath, and I think if you'll page, uh, over to page 55 of the mayor's deposition, which I provided in previous meetings, uh, she was addressed by Mr. Mays saying, Mayor, I represent you and others. There is a list that I provided you that has others. I don't think the mayor spent. But to Mr. Ackman's point, um, as soon as we learned about this, we fixed it. I believe YouTube is better than my memory, but early on, after I discovered, uh, that this payment had been made, I questioned the fact, and extensive FOIs were issued, and I found out a lot of information. And while everybody says this was a, uh, overlooked, one of the co-litigants or co-planets in this case, which is a resident of Tonny Town, I provided you an email that he said clearly that we need to get the mayor... of Tonic Town, I provided you an email that he said clearly that we need to get the mayor, the council's blessings before any payments were made. So those are in the record. Now, to Mr. Ackman's point about the second lawsuit regarding FOI, which is pretty extensive, it wasn't July. It was June 19th, to be more specific. And I would point out to the council that Mr. Ackman accepted service on the account. And the gentleman that spoke earlier tonight served him with that lawsuit. Now, I'm not a lawyer, but Rule 1.4 says that an attorney is supposed to keep his clients informed. I believe the clients of Mr. Ackman are not only the mayor, but also this counsel. Now, in speaking with other attorneys in regarding to this matter, I asked them, "How common is it for an attorney to accept service on behalf of his client?" Well, it's pretty common, but under no circumstance, and I talked to more than one attorney, would they accept service without consulting their clients first, before they accepted that? Now, to that point, the lawsuit's filed, but to the point of communication from you, Mr. Ackman, I don't believe the counsel was informed in a timely fashion. I don't know what timely defines this, but from June to maybe a month ago, has any of y'all heard anything about the FOI lawsuit, any of the particulars? That's my point. And to your point, Mr. Burrus, about transparency, I agree 100%. If you've got an attorney sitting down there at the end of the table, and he's supposed to be advising you, I don't think you wait three or four months before you tell him, "Oh, by the way, you've been sued."
And to piggyback off his comment, you know, he asked us if we had gotten anything since June on the FOI case. As a matter of fact, we all got an email today at 4:33 with a briefing over that particular case. And the complaint supplement and the second supplement were attached in that. So we did get updated briefing on that as of today at 4:30.
Kenneth Lo, 18702 Clearwater. As a point of order, if we're going to do it right, everybody needs to do it right. You shouldn't be calling out people. You should be talking to you. We need to get this lined up. If not going to talk to you, they don't need to get up here.
4:33?
Yeah, you got it at 4:33.
I'd already left the house, so, okay.
You got some, you got some homework tonight.
I do, I guess. Anything else on that matter?
No, sir. I mean, the only other thing that I kind of thought of while I was, you know, because this bothered me to, to get to see this on October 1st, or whenever they published it, and the, the ruling came out on September 30th. And to not know that, you know, the city themselves was on the hook for this lawsuit, and it wasn't just the mayor's actions of, you know, misusing the funds. And not having an update on this, when, one of my thought processes on that is, you know, we have Chief Genison, Chief Krueg, Public Works, Community Development Director come up here, and they give us reports. Clerk Treasurer gives us a report. If we had it to where legal had a spot where they gave us a report, I'm sure there are some things they can't go into details, or won't want to go into details in front of us. But having that, that report come from them monthly may be a great thing to where we're up to speed on this at least monthly, even if it's just like, you know, I, I look at James' report, you know, he gives us a spreadsheet of everything that's going on. And there might be some things that don't move at a good pace, but they're on there, and we know they're there, and we're refreshed on it monthly. So that might be something we look at in the future. Or simply, you know, at the end of every meeting, right after council comments, mayor comments, there's comments from attorneys. And instead of saying, "No comment," we have a little briefing there. That might be another spot where we don't even have to make changes.
All right. Moving on, we have a discussion for city council to go into executive session to review the redacted HR audit report due to the termination and reinstatement of the current head of HR department.
Danny? Yes, sir. So one of the citizens took it upon themselves to go out and give us, and they should be in your packet, a list of citizens here in the city that have all attested that they would like us to go into convenient executive session and go over the details of that third-party HR report. That also in your packet should be an invoice to an individual to conduct that, that investigation, payment of $5,250. And then we've got some letters to the Attorney General and a response from the Attorney General. I would say, with these signatures, we have an obligation to our constituents here to put our eyes on it. You know, all's, all's been told is by, not the mayor herself, but other, other admins here in the city, that the HR report found the employee was vindicated, and that the council was justified in their actions of reinstating her. It's hearsay, but we're told to drop it. And we've got these citizens here that have signed something and put their names out there publicly, saying that they would like us to, if they cannot get to see it, at least give us the opportunity to go into executive session and put our own eyes on it, and what we come from that, whether we make a resolution vindicating and taking a stance that, you know, we've seen it, and we give a formal apology to the individual that was terminated and all the turmoil that they went through during that duration. But I've been, I've been, this is the second time I've tried to put this, I've tried to put it on the agenda a couple of months ago, and was told I couldn't. And this time, I was pretty adamant that this would get put on the agenda, and we'd at least hear, if, if, if we can't go into executive session on it, that we'd at least hear, hear in a public setting of why we can't. But if we could, I think that would, that would be benefit, a benefit to the citizens that are calling this upon us.
I'm one of the several constituents of the city that asks that you people have firsthand knowledge of a report that was ordered after your actions. Now, maybe that was just to be sure y'all didn't act out of order. But by virtue that the FOI that was made was trumped by 2025-08 AG opinion, and that one criteria was not met, is because the finality of her termination didn't exist. Now, I can assure you, folks, you've got your lawyer sitting down here, but this lawsuit that I referred to, 72CV-25-2686, commonly known as the FOI lawsuit, we're just now beginning discovery. And the gentleman that left earlier has, in the Second Amendment, brought this issue to order. And in discovery, there's a little bit different set of rules. Only the judge, not the AG, because the AG opinions are not binding. The judge can tell us, "We can't look at it." I just feel like it's important that y'all know what it says. Maybe another question is this. Seven people were interviewed, according to the bill, that paid for this $5,200 and 50, $5,250 bill. So I'm not sure who those seven people are. I don't think you are. But there's one missing council member here tonight that has sent a text out to all of y'all that said she's witnessed two fireable offenses. I can only assume, since she made those allegations, and certainly wasn't at liberty to say what those fireable offenses were, maybe she's seen the report, maybe she's one of the people that were interviewed. I don't know. But there's a lot of mystery, and that's why a lot of people, every one of these, and it didn't take me long, it's long to get it. These are not a cluster. They're from every ward within the city. Every geographic, demographic, business owners, old, young, they want you to at least be able, realizing that you can't tell them necessarily what you've read, just like when you come out and made the decision to reinstate Ms. Genison, you look kind of foolish, in my opinion. I'm not, well, I don't know. We spent money on it, but I don't know. So please, listen to the people that signed this. Take a few minutes. Read what's there. At least you'll know. Thank you.
I can't recall chapter and verse like Mick, Mr. Wagner does, but I can, can tell you this. I can tell you what it feels like to have, to be a good employee and be thrown under the bus, to be demoralized. It is an incredibly gutting feeling when you show up to work every day, and especially in Luanne's case, she's the face of, she's the voice of the voice, very often, of this city. She deserved, in the first place, for that not to happen. Thankfully, you guys did do the right thing. But she's, it's not over for her. She needs to be made whole. If she was some loser that just came in and slept in the broom closet, I wouldn't, I wouldn't give her the time of day. But she is not that kind of person. She needs, she was, in my opinion, she was betrayed. She does need to be made whole. You can do it. This is her request. And put it on paper. Luanne did nothing wrong. She didn't deserve what happened. She is vindicated, and her name is cleared. You should do that for her. And if you won't do that for her, I, I don't know who you would do it for. So, thank you.
Mike Zuppo, 900 South Penaltale. I stood up here for Luanne because I really like her. My main thing, you all are the leaders. If I was in y'all's shoes, I'd want to know the report. Because how you can go forward with a lot of hearsay, whether, who knows? If somebody does know, and they're just talking about it, you guys are the leaders. I think y'all need to know about it.
Kristen Law, 458 Steel Road. If you're setting the example for a city, and I would tell my daughter this, she's 14. I mean, apologizing for something, there's no, there's not, there's humility in it, for sure. But you guys can't do that for this woman. That's ridiculous. I mean, if you've already, she's been vindicated. Am I correct? Is that right? I mean, according to the report, is that right?
Hearsay.
Hearsay that she's been vindicated. Still hearsay.
She's in, she's in her position. But without reading the report, I don't know what the report says.
All right. Let me get this right. You guys don't do a line item anything. Am I correct?
I'm sorry?
Is that what Burrus said? You guys don't get a line item anything? So, I mean, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be reasonable to ask for a line item anything if you were talking about what you were spending the taxpayers' money on? Would that be a reasonable request? I mean, I do it in my businesses. I mean, do you guys do? I have every receipt from this month in my purse right now, just in case. I keep them for more than 10 years. The IRS can come back 30. So I'm just curious. I mean, would it not be reasonable to ask for a line item anything if you were getting a request from any company to do anything for the city? That would be reasonable, right? Because then you would have complete transparency, wouldn't you? Right? Then, then there wouldn't be, we wouldn't have these meetings about misappropriated funds and, and things like that. Isn't that the case? Isn't that what we teach our kids when we teach them basic math? Accounting? Isn't that the case? I would think. I guess you would know had you asked for a line item anything when you were paying people, right? When you were writing the checks, I mean, the people, citizens worked for it, right? They, they worked really hard, right? And the government definitely comes in, the IRS definitely comes in and asks for a line item to everything if they get audited, right? I keep my records for longer than 10 years for that reason.
Well, point of order, because this has nothing to do with...
But it does. Does it not?
It doesn't.
But this is an audit, right?
No.
No.
How about you're talking about, when this is all said and done, it's getting audited?
Not. It's a point of order. So if you're not going to stick to the point...
Okay, all right.
So then I would leave, I would probably lean on legal, given their opinion. I've heard lots of reservation on why we shouldn't. And I would assume after you speak, we would go and either vote on bringing this to city council for an executive session, or I don't know if we can go into one now, if somebody's got ahold of the report that we could do now. So it just kind of depends on where that goes. But I, I would think Justin has something to input here.
I, I do. Last week, I called and talked to Danny about this particular issue. The council can't go into executive session to talk about this. And it's, it's set forth in the FOI. The FOI has two parts. One, it talks about open meetings. The other one, it talks about open records. So we're talking about open meetings. The Supreme Court has been clear in, you know, the 50, 60 years that the FOI has been in existence, that the FOI is to be interpreted broadly. So open meetings, a section of the FOI is to be interpreted broadly in, in favor of open meetings. The, the exceptions are to be interpreted narrowly. An executive session is a narrow, is, the executive, executive session is a exception to the FOI, because you're not conducting the business in public. You're doing that for specific purposes in an executive session outside of the public eye. The FOI states in 2519106, that an executive session shall be permitted only for the following purposes. It lists those purposes as considering the employee, employment, appointment, promotion, demotion, discipline, or resignation of a public officer or employee. And y'all did that a number of months ago, when you went into executive session to talk about a termination of an employee. Under Arkansas law, you were able to reinstate that particular type of employee right at department head. And so that's the action that you did. And when you did that, you know, it was over. The, the employee was reinstated, in, in, as far as the, the employment action. The employee, the employee was reinstated to the position. After, after that action took place, there was an investigation report regarding issues that were brought up in the, in the course of, of that determination. However, there was no employment action taken as a result. There was no demotion or discipline or resignation or termination of that employee. So there's not that issue to be heard. And you can't go into a executive session for the purpose of reviewing a report. So I talked to Danny about that. We had a good discussion about it. I told him that, that I knew this opinion was going to be unpopular with, with, with some people. So I called an attorney at the municipal league, Caleb Alexander, who works on FOI issues across the state, gets calls every day about, about the FOI. I often call him myself when I get one, when it's an issue that I haven't dealt with before, particularly complicated one, and, and talk through it. And I talked through this particular issue with Caleb. He agreed with the opinion that, you know, that I just summarized here, that the council could not go into executive session. Now, the, the reason why I'm stating it this way, that you can't, is that the FOI is, not only has a financial penalty to it, it's penal in nature. It has a criminal penalty to it. So I'm always want to be very cautious in making decisions on exceptions to the FOI in areas where, A, we can't release a document, or B, we can't go into executive session, because of that, the penal nature of, of the FOI. So, so that's what we discussed. He asked me to, in response to, you know, to, to raise it here, let it be known to the, to the council. But, you know, if there's any questions about it, I'm happy to, happy to address. But I just don't think that the FOI would allow you an assistance. think that the FOI would allow you in the system to go into executive session.
So, in that, when you, you said we would have to go in on employment termination, reinstatement, demotion, or promotion. When you're fired, wrongfully terminated, and then you're rehired, is that not technically, I mean, in the eyes of that stipulant that they're holding us to, is that not technically a promotion from being fired to not fired?
No, because it already happened. There was a termination, and then you all went into executive session, can't remember what month that was, but several months ago, a number of months ago, and discussed the issue in depth, and came back out and voted to reinstate. And at that point, the employee is reinstated. And after that point, going into executive session, there'd have to be a purpose for doing that. There'd have to be an additional, either some type of, you know, employment event, such as a demotion or resignation, or a--
Like an employment event of an HR report being, an audit being done on you?
But there was no--
Action taken?
There was no, well, there was no discipline, employment discipline. So, there's no suspension, there was no termination that was taken as a result of that report.
That's because, potentially, the report says there was no action to be taken.
I can't--
I tend to--
I understand that, but I can't comment on the report. That's part of the problem, is that, Danny, there are certain things that, there are certain points where an employment issue comes to a city council, right? And this particular one is when it involves a department head. And in that instance, if there is an action that is allowed, that allows you to go into executive session, you can go into executive session, and you can discuss that employment issue in executive session, and then you have to vote back in public. But there are other items that don't come to you, right? They stay between employee and supervisor. And the city has an obligation and cannot release certain information regarding that relationship. And so, you know, that's the issue with the report, is that it's just not something that can be released by the city. So, you know, the supervisor has a report, you know, on, I've advised several of you who've asked me to meet with the supervisor, talk with the supervisor, but as far as, like, going to executive session or releasing the report, the city can't do that.
What happens, however, if this discovery process allows it to be released? I mean, I guess that's--
Yeah, it's a good question.
Out of our hands.
Yeah, if the judge thinks that my opinion is wrong, thinks the AG is wrong, the Attorney General is wrong on this, then it'll be released, probably redacted and released, but it'll be released.
Sure, yeah.
But I would advise the city not to release it until the judge tells you--
And I understand. I read the AG's opinion on that, and I understand the opinion. I mean, it's a little, I mean, they're hanging on the final administrative resolution part, kind of, as one of the reasons not to release.
It resolved on the fact--
As a FOIA.
Right. It resolved because, the only point where you can release an investigation, it's called an employee evaluation report. The only point where you can release one of those, if it formed the basis for the termination or the discipline, the suspension.
But since it was done after the fact--
That's correct.
And the reinstatement was done prior to the investigation, that also factors into the decision not to release, right?
That timing was important for the AG. The timing was important, in my opinion, as well.
Perhaps she not been reinstated, and the report had been done.
It could have been released, Jeff.
Mr. Wagner. I'm a bit confused by the barrister's argument of releasing the report. That's not what the petition asked y'all to do. We didn't ask you to release the report. Unfortunately, I had an attorney that was sitting here, prepared to argue this, thinking that it wouldn't be an argument, because we simply asked you to convene in executive session and have firsthand knowledge of what the report said. We didn't ask you to release it. So, I've listened for a lot of arguments there, why you can't release it. We're not asking you to release it. We're just asking you to read the report. So, you got firsthand knowledge of what it said. So, I'm not sure what all the protection about releasing a report. We're not asking you to release a report. We're asking you to read a report.
Mr. Eichman, are we allowed to go into executive session to read the report as is requested by this citizen's petition?
Well, the FOI doesn't permit you to go into executive session to read a report. So, no.
Sounds like there'll be other--
We're not adjudicating, we're not adjudicating an FOI issue here. We're simply asking you to read a report. The question--
Point of order.
Yes or no? I don't think you're a member of the council.
Well, I'll just go on record and say, I would like the opportunity to read the report. You know, it's just a reading. It's not a release. I don't even care to discuss it amongst ourselves in executive session. It's just, is what it is. But I understand your position, Mr. Eichman.
One of the discussions I had with municipal league today was whether you all individually, as council members, could meet individually with Mr. Latham and review the report. I'm still working on that. They're talking that through, but they told me on occasion, they have advised that that might be possible.
Thank you.
But you'd have to, the council members who did that would have to understand that the contents of the report could not be disclosed.
Absolutely.
And they'd have to review a redacted version of the other report. So, I'll let you know on that, Mike and Danny. But that was part of the discussion that I had with them today.
I appreciate that. That's, I would say, that's a win in my book, as we're getting to view that. And whether it's one-on-one, we go in and sit down with Mr. Latham, he throws it on the desk, we pick it up, we read it, and we leave. That sounds like a win to me, and would give us foreknowledge of what occurred in that report and what the findings of that would be. And I think that's ultimately the outcome that we're seeking. So, with that being said, how long will it take until you've got an answer for us, when you can do that?
Unbelievable, this week, yeah.
So, we can get that later this week? Can we put, can we move something to city council that we have another discussion? Whether that doesn't, you know, give yourself the week to get an answer on that, get back to us. If it doesn't happen, we've at least got something on the Cal, or, I'm sorry, on the city council, that we can address this issue once again at the city council meeting. But pretty much so that the ball doesn't get dropped, something to--
We're going to be notified--
Hopefully, within the week, but if we're not, at least there's something--
I'll bet we can follow up individually with Mr. Eichman--
Yeah.
And see, and, you know, if we've got an answer, because if he lets me know that I can come read it, I will certainly do that.
Oh, for sure, yeah. But I just, I want to have something that kind of CYA--
That's fine, too. I mean--
At the city council meeting, we have something that we either discuss this once again, or, you know, we get that answer within the week.
And my only kickback on that is, city council is not for discussion.
Right.
That's why we have these.
Okay. I mean, I guess ultimately, if it's not anything we hear back within the week, and we, you know, we don't want to, then we can just bring it up the next Cal in November, so.
I like that idea better.
So-- Yeah, I'd love to make a few comments, if I might. You know, I understand that many members of our city staff and several citizens have been upset about the outcome of this matter on both sides. Some believe that we, as a council, acted impudently, and some believe we were too passive. There were and are strong emotions on both sides of this particular matter that seemed to take the council's decision as either a proclamation adamantly for or against the mayor, or for or against the employee personally. I can assure you, that decision was not an emotional decision. It was a legal decision. It was a financial decision. Despite our fondness for both parties, the council had to act in the best interest of the city. We had to mediate to protect the city's financial and legal interests. As Mr. Eichman stated earlier, we're not able to release that independent report to the public during the city council meeting, so it's possible that the public will never be satisfied with this case. There are things that we, as legislators, can't know about personnel matters. It crosses out of our purview. And therefore, there are many things we can't say, because we just don't know. But what I can say is that in administrative matters, it can be easy for errors to happen when we don't consult our paid legal counsel. In this particular situation, when the employee was terminated, city council was not certain if the mayor was falling within her legal rights to terminate, or if the mayor had crossed into error. Our attorney has confirmed the mayor did not consult him before terminating the employee. The city council, acting within our right to do so, convened to take a look at some of the evidence in an executive session, but we had to be very careful, we were told by our council, about who we could ask, what questions. At one point, I stepped out of that executive session, after several hours there, to clarify with Mr. Eichman if I could ask a specific question of the witness that was in the room at the time. And when I stepped back into that executive session, the meeting had wrapped up, the council had decided to take no action. That was not a ruling in favor of the mayor, it was just a lack of action at that time. However, over the following two weeks, it became clear that a lawsuit was being initiated against the city for wrongful termination. And as we consulted our attorney to see if we would win or lose that wrongful termination suit, it seemed pretty clear that we would probably lose that case. And when that became clear, three of our city council members, we need two to call an executive session or a special meeting, three of us, of which I was one, called another emergency meeting to discuss that new information. Our goal was to save the city from losing a lawsuit and to ensure the most just decision was upheld. While that meeting seemed hasty to some, it followed days of research and discussions with our attorney, which led to that meeting. We met on that specific day, it was a Monday, because it was the only day of that week we could meet, since there was a planning commission meeting in this room on Tuesday night. We were also making an effort to be sensitive to a council member with a hospitalized mother who would be out of town at the end of the week to visit her, and another council member who I personally wished to accommodate, because I believed she had a regular and treasured commitment at church on Wednesday night. I did not realize on that day that that city council member was out of town at camp, and she didn't return my call. Upon hearing all the new evidence, the city council easily decided to overturn the termination. We literally had zero paperwork from the mayor's office to support the employee's termination. Our attorney also recommended the city hire an independent HR consultant. This $5,250 that some people are very upset about, we knew that was coming. It wasn't some underhanded move. And that idea was placed out there by the attorney so that we could evaluate whether or not that termination was made in error, or if that decision could be upheld in court. It would appear, although I haven't had the opportunity to review that, and others up here haven't either, that that independent investigation revealed that the termination was not lawful, the termination was not lawful, and should have been overturned, which it was, because the employee in question still works here. So, it would seem the city made the correct decision legally and financially. But here's the thing, people make errors. Mayors make errors. And we do our best, as council, to try to accommodate the mayor as she hires her employees, while also protecting the city from lawsuits and upholding a fair working environment. I do know that some citizens were upset because they felt that their friend, the mayor, was treated unfairly. I get it. I understand they didn't have the whole story regarding the complete lack of paperwork to support a termination. We aren't fighting against the mayor, but we do work for the voters, not our dear mayor. And I'm so sorry for any confusion this has caused among citizens. I'm sorry for any emotional response it's caused. I'm sorry for the arguments and the back and forth. I am. We are trying to work together, I promise you. We're trying to protect our mayor, we're trying to protect our staff, we're trying to act legally, even when it's very unpopular and very uncomfortable.
All right. Moving on. A discussion on clarification of the organizational chart.
Oh, can, before we--
Oh, I'm sorry.
Was this going back to Cal? So--
We don't know--
We'll wait for Justin's opinion on whether we can or not do that.
Okay.
I'll put it on my calendar.
Now, Mike, the org chart.
Well, first of all, I need to apologize. I had an updated org chart in my OneDrive, and I apparently failed to send it to the appropriate people to get it on the agenda, but there was, really, there's nothing new about it. It's just different look in nature. And the only thing it's intended to clarify is the reporting structure. Even the updated one from the first one seems to indicate that the reporting structure, the police department flows through the administrative assistant. That's obviously not what's supposed to happen. So, the only thing that I was doing was to even bring more clarity to the organizational chart, that the police department reported directly to the mayor. So, since you don't have a chart to look at, I mean, I guess you can smack me down for my failure to get that included. I take full responsibility for that. Or you can trust that I will supply the clean version for the city council. It's really an innocuous adjustment. So, I mean, I get it. I've been a stickler on people before, so, you know, if I get smacked down on this, and it's not the end of the world, I can bring it back in a month.
So, what's the change, then, Mr. Oshkoye?
There is really no change. It's just a cleaner-looking version. I don't have even the one that we passed a couple of months ago on me, so I can't even show that to you right now. The other one, a little cleaner, I could probably, we can probably get it even neater, but, you know, again, it's on my phone in my OneDrive folder, I just didn't get it sent. There's been a, obviously, a lot going on, but that's no excuse.
Does anybody have heartburn over that?
No.
Can you get us a clean file tomorrow?
I'm, we're going to be in Fort Smith all day tomorrow, so not tomorrow. Probably by the end of the week.
I'm still a little lost on what you're changing.
It's not really changing anything. It had--
Would we be able to pull that up, our existing organizational chart?
It's the, well, the administrative assistant comes off to the side of the, underneath the mayor.
Uh-huh.
And you have the departments that report directly to the mayor. Well, the line kind of joins the, you have the administrative assistant here, the line from the reporting departments directly under the mayor that go to the mayor. It's not terrible, but it's not the greatest thing in the world. The line probably should go straight up from the administrative assistant instead of to the side. I'm not a very--
So, Mr. Eichman's provided me, you know, the chart, so I see what you're saying. You're saying it kind of flows through the admin assistant down to the department heads?
Kind of, sort of. I mean--
Is this it?
Kind of bypass--
Madeline, is that what this is here?
No, no.
No, it was the--
Oh, there it is.
The only other thing I would point out--
They're there, just underneath the, the only thing, I was just going to draw, make the line straight up to the mayor from the administrative assistant, because the administrative assistant only reports to the mayor.
Well, I have no problem with that, and don't mind making a motion.
Well, with that, the only other thing that I would show is, the museum board is underneath the planning commission. Is that how we want that one as well?
Reports to the-- Well, which reports to the city council. Both those flow up to us.
But it looks like the museum board reports to the planning commission, and then...
Well, I guess we can just spread that line out, too. Both of them should report to city council. That's a good point.
So I would, yeah, I would point that out.
Okay.
I didn't know if that might be what you were correcting.
Well, I am now.
So does planning commission report to council?
Yes.
And then museum board reports to council?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, I'm fine if you get us a clean copy, and honestly, if we don't like the way that it looks in a couple of weeks, we just vote no, right?
Yeah, I like that. So is there a motion and a second?
Yeah, I didn't make any motion.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Is there a second? I only made a motion. I made the motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right.
Amber and Tim, going to next city council?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Next, we have a discussion on the 412-112 Water and Sewer Relocation Project Change Order. Mr. Gregory?
Yes, Gregory. Come right up. I'm taking James' place tonight.
I was wondering why I was here, if you were...
Yeah, I started to say.
Larry Gregory with Garber. This is a reconciliation change order for the water and sewer relocations, part of the Highway 612 construction. This, the contractor was Goodwin, and Goodwin. This is strictly for accounting purposes, as it decreases the total amount of the contract by slightly over $199,000. So it's, it's just making the numbers work.
So actually, quote unquote, a savings?
Somewhat, yes. Unfortunately, there was a much larger add earlier.
There was, but this, at least, but this is a little bit of good news coming back on the back end of that.
Right. And from what I recall, the, the city's portion was 10%. So, this is saving the city $20,000.
Thank you very much.
Citizen comment? All right. Council?
I'll make a motion that we push this to council.
Do second?
Danny?
I don't have any further discussion from myself, anyway.
Roll call?
Tim?
Yes, ma'am.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Next, we have a discussion on the sale of surplus materials. Mark?
Yes, remember last couple of meetings, James had mentioned that he had tried to sell that pipe, and we get very low bids on it. So what he'd like to try to do is advertise for what we actually paid for the, the pipe that we would like to sell. So, we would like to get approval of selling the surplus pipe. And he got a list of it there.
For what we gave as opposed to, to what was offered?
Yeah.
So we're putting it up for sale and not up for bid again?
Yeah.
Is any of this usable by the city?
No, there are some that we're keeping, but no, this is really surplus.
This is, this is just what we're getting rid of.
This is actually, most of this pipe was actually bought, I think, through bonds, so this money will have to go back through there, it's just not...
We just need to get better returns than the first bid.
I got you.
Citizen comment? Council?
Why do we have this surplus of piping in the first place? Why do we overbuy?
That is a six or eight-year-old question, I think.
Is this the stuff that's been sitting on the first place?
This goes back a while before they started building the transmission line. So it's just, you know, they order a whole bunch of pipe, didn't use it all, so it's surplus.
Hmm.
The city actually purchased it, not the contractor.
Through bonds, through bond fund money, yeah.
That's correct.
Goodness. Um, okay. But could we use it for anything else? Or does it have to be used on? I don't know.
That's way off my...
Wait, you wanna make a treehouse out of it?
I don't know, yeah, something. I've heard talks of another park, you can make some kind of, I don't know how big those pipes are from what I've seen them.
We, we got a smoking hut.
You could be creative.
We got a smoking hut deal on it a couple of years back, and, and we, we bought it.
Yeah.
And then left it out in the sun.
So, at any rate, I, I guess we need to...
Put it on Facebook market?
Put it...
Do you, do you need our...
Make a motion to sell it?
Yeah, do you need our approval to do anything, Mark? Are you just telling us what you're gonna do?
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay. Tim and Amber, okay, roll call.
Moving to city council?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Next, we have a discussion on impact fees.
James had requested that I put this on here, since he's not here. Let me just mention, there has been a couple of council meetings, and a couple of you asked about maybe looking at water and sewer going up to 100%. So what you have in front of you is actually, the ordinance reflects 100%. I do wanna caution you about something here, because, you know, it's not about just, you know, bringing in a whole bunch of money because you can. The problem is, is you have to target this money for very specific improvements. And what we have is, and I know Tim's looking at it, but, yeah. We, we are in the process, hopefully, eventually getting a really good master sewer plan. We don't have one. And really, our water plan, in my opinion, is not really what I would call up to date. But you've only got seven years to spend this, so if you collect it, you, you have to target that money for a very specific project. And I don't think, to be honest with you, we're there to be able to just go and say, hey, let's go ahead and get it. I can tell you on transportation impact fees, I can tell you exactly where that money's going. Your first one's going to Managani. Okay? That's supplementing whatever we had left from the developer. But when you talk about this project sitting out here, you're talking about a couple of million dollars that we're gonna have to save back, and it will be spent within 10 years. But you've gotta focus on stuff, you can't just, okay, let's just bring in a whole bunch of money because we can. It's gotta be very specific about where that money's going. And without a master, especially a sewer plan, without a master sewer plan, and if you even look at that book, Tim, you can see where part of it was targeted to go for that relief sewer that we got 12.2 million dollars for.
Yes, sir.
So, I would caution you for that. I mean, if you wanna move forward, it's up to you all what you wanna do. But I think the reason that originally it went to only 50% is, is we're not there to say, because here's the question, and, and they can't. I mean, you know, a developer can ask, how come, where's this money going to? How's that gonna affect my development? And you better have an answer for that. So, but I'll do whatever you guys wanna do.
My question to you on that would be, okay, so in the seven years, the money that's left over, what happens to that money at that point?
You have to give it back.
Okay. To...
You haven't targeted it for any specific thing.
You refund it back to the developers?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So...
It has to be spent in seven years.
But it's there if you need it, and as long as you're...
Whatever we collected now, and I don't know how much it is, I know it's over a half million dollars.
Yeah. Use it and be proactive of where it's going. I got you.
Correct.
Okay.
I know there's a, a discussion of annexation coming up later, and we know we have, I mean, depending on the resolution of the suit with Washington Water...
Sure.
Can that go to those service lines and those areas of potential annexation?
Anything that you're requiring, you're expanding services to, or like a water line. I mean, we've got, I was telling James, I mean, we've got some water lines down here on the south side that need to be expanded from eight to 12. Okay, you can utilize that money to do that, because you're expanding actual capacity to do it. Because it's need.
Perfect.
Because of development.
I don't, I don't think we'd have a problem finding ways to...
Allocating those funds.
I mean, I, I don't, it would be nice if y'all had some suggestions to show, to...
I mean, we're, we're kind of, yeah, we're kind of in the middle of all kinds of stuff right now, but we do need to get a better plan of where we're actually taking sewer.
Should we postpone this vote until we have a plan?
I would suggest that.
Can, well then...
I, you know, we've got, we've got a 10-year capital plan, you'll get to see that when you get the budget, so that gets you better, that's really a better perspective when it comes to water. So, as you know, you can't use it like, for instance, we're, we're here trying to build it, we're gonna have to buy a pump for South Penalti. You can't use that money for that. That's a maintenance.
Sure, yeah. Well, you know, people that are, are developers and people, I mean, we know we've got plenty of places going up, houses residential, we know that the commercial stuff out here in the west is gonna blow up. So, having a plan in place to let people know, hey, we're not just taking your money, you know?
It's going, it's going to provide a service there, yeah.
We'll, we'll probably need a fire station out here at some point in time. So, I would feel more comfortable, certainly, if we, I, I know you can't come up with 100% of the plans, I mean, you can't, you don't have a crystal ball.
Well, at least if we could have a 10-year, that way we'd, you know, you've got a 7-year window there of what you're gonna try to allocate to, towards.
I would certainly feel more comfortable, I mean, we've talked about the 50%, 100% issue, beat it to death, as a matter of fact, but certainly feel more comfortable with some plans in place to look at. So...
Do you think time getting to the Cal, or to the city council would be enough time?
No.
Or, when do you wanna postpone?
I'd table this till... I would motion to table it to the next Cal, and it, I don't even know if that gives you enough time, if you wanna...
We'll try.
I mean, we, there's no emergency to enact these today or the next council meeting.
I would like, sometime, early next year.
Okay.
You just wanna table till a later date?
If we wanted to, we could tie it back to it, because that's what these developers do with that.
Sure.
Why are you gonna charge the...
Right. I don't blame them.
That's what we're gonna do.
Sure.
Is that a motion, Mike?
Yes, I'm making a motion to table to the next Cal, and if we have to table it from there, we'll table it from there, too.
I, I... I'll keep you updated on it.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, so we've got a water tower going up, right? We have a water tower going up, correct?
I don't think we're gonna spend it on that.
Okay. What, remind me what we can and cannot spend that money on, those impact fees on.
Well, you could spend it on the water.
You mean the one that we're on, under budget?
The bond.
Mm-hmm. So we could pay off that bond early? We'd save a bunch of interest?
You could.
Plus, we're, didn't we not get enough from the bondage to even build a tank in the first place?
Correct, yep.
I'm sorry, Mike? Yeah, we did not get enough.
We didn't get enough? Okay.
I, I know there's a motion, and there's a second on, on the table, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I do have some comments if y'all don't...
Now, one of the things that you could use it for, and I know James is looking for another source, but if you remember right, he needed that service line from the 18-inch on 412 to service the tower. Remember that?
Yeah.
And it wasn't included in the bond, which is gonna be about a million dollars. So, that money that impact could actually use for the tower, because you're actually, that's, yes.
Yeah. And at the time of this, of this Duncan Associates study, we, we didn't think we needed $12 million, the, the money that we got from the senator.
Well, it's, it's, well, it talks about that.
But it wasn't 12 million?
No.
Six.
No, six, wasn't it?
Correct.
Yeah.
You know, here's, here's my idea, and, and Mike, you're right, we, we've beaten this thing a bunch, I wanna beat it a little more, if you don't mind, make sure this horse is dead.
Oh, it's dead.
In, in honor of Arthur Pinzo. The city paid roughly $25,000 for this report to Duncan Associates out of Austin, and it was in order to see what impact builders had, or developers had, on, on our city every time they, they built something. It was not emotional, it was a study performed by experts in this field, it was not an emotional decision, it was a mathematical decision. And we may not agree with that number, and it may seem big, may seem like a large number, but we hired experts, because these experts do this professionally. At this particular point in time, we are not charging builders for their full impact on the city. Instead, our city government offers a subsidy to those builders. They get 100% of their profits, and we pay for half of their water and sewer impact fees. As a fiscal conservative, I can't support a government subsidy, subsidies don't work. They aren't good for the taxpayers, they aren't fair for the citizens who have to pay their full bills without governmental assistance, and providing a subsidy to builders is an emotional decision. And you may have noticed, I, I wasn't elected to be emotional, or to support my friends, but to spend taxpayer money wisely. During rough economic times, we don't tell citizens that we're so thankful to have them live here in the city, that we're willing to pay for half of their water bill, or half of their sewer bill. But with a subsidy like this, one specific profession gets an unfair benefit that our actual citizens don't get. Non-tonnant builders get better treatment from the city government than even our citizens get. And as we enter budget season, and we see how tight money is, and how much infrastructure we need to build to support our booming population, it is shocking to me that we would essentially say, don't worry about it, we have enough money to cover all of that, everything we need now, everything we need in the future, you go ahead and keep half that bill. Go ahead and keep the profits, too. And if I may gently remind my council here, building costs have gone up. The price of goods and services has gone up. So this very expensive study that we paid for three years ago, which was mathematically calculated for the impact for a new build three years ago, is now three years behind. That means that if we increase to 100% of the impact fees that this study said three years ago, we're still behind our current pricing. Frankly, what we ought to do is go get a new study, and go for 100% of the new increased amount. That's what we should do. But as a fiscal conservative, as a fiduciary of the city, even though I have many close friends who are builders, I, I just can't ethically endorse a subsidy to builders, any more than I can offer a back deal, a back deal door, a backdoor deal, rather, to my favorite dentist, or the many teachers who reside in our city, or people who own gas stations, or any other profession. That's favoritism. It, it's cronyism, and it's wrong. So even if it benefits people that I care about, it's wrong. So I suggest we move ahead with 100% of the old outdated fee numbers, because it's the most responsible move for our taxpayers, and those are the only people we're here to represent.
I agree with 99% of what you said there. I understand where you're coming from. The only thing that I am uncomfortable with right now is we don't have the best answer that we can possibly give these guys, as to why we're charging them 100% of the fee, where is their money gonna go?
And we have seven years...
If we can get them a month? Well, maybe, yeah. So, you know, if, if we can, in a month, come up with, here's some, here's where your money's gonna go, to, to solidly show them, we're not just doing this willy-nilly to punish people, I would feel more comfortable with more solid plans in place. I understand what you're saying, I appreciate it, but I, I, I can wait another month if provided...
I like, like what you said, Mr. Burris, and, you know, to your point, Mr. Washkoyak, I think we instantly came up with one place that we could use that money in, is to fund the rest of that water tower, and, you know, get us out of debt on the bond that we've got there, and, and save ourselves interest. I, I think that would be a very responsible thing for us as fiduciaries of the city's thing for us as fiduciaries of the city's money to pay off bonds and not have that interest payment coming out of our bank account for the city. So, you know, that's one thing that we found here in two seconds of discussing this. And like Mr. Latham said, we have seven years to figure out what to do with the rest of it. And if we, we're putting it off a month with your table, but even in that month, whatever permits are pulled and we're going to miss out on those developers paying that impact to the city for these projects. So I kind of agree with Mr. Burris's haste to get something approved at 100%. And, but I don't know what the order is. I'd have to ask the recorder down there. We've got a table on the floor.
You got a table in a second.
Does that trump?
In a second.
Well, for the record, this isn't hasty at all. It's been two years ago that we.
Haste might be the wrong word.
50%. So there, there is a motion on the, on the table. I will vote against that particular motion, but it is.
Does that trump a motion that was made by Mr. Burris at this point?
You can vote no on this and then we'll do.
We still have to vote, we still have to vote on the table.
Yeah, you have to vote on the table first.
Very well.
If it doesn't pass, then.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
This is motion to table to the next Cal. Daniel.
No.
Jim?
No.
Larry?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Well.
Neither way.
Yeah, it's fine.
There's no, it's dead.
Yeah.
So I make a motion that we, we increase the impact rates to 100% and move this to city council.
I'll second that motion.
May I ask a question? The quorum is of the body present. Is that not right? Not, not the missing member?
We, the way the council, the way the vote has to happen on the council level when you're passing legislation is the majority of the total, so you need four votes.
I got you. My bad.
The mayor could have voted in this instance to actually advance it if she were here.
All right.
So you need four votes to pass it.
Okay. I should know that, but I don't know. So now, we have, we have a motion.
Yep. Of 100% impact fees moved to the next city council.
Let's get that water tower paid down or paid off.
Did anybody second that motion?
Yes. Daniel and Tim.
Okay, roll call.
Daniel.
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
No.
Mike?
No.
Amber?
No.
Say it again.
So that kind of works as a table, though. You all can treat it like it.
Like a table to me.
That was fun.
So they can still bring it back at the next Cal. Okay, there you go. With plans, okay.
Next, we have a discussion on the final payment for the 412-612 sewer extension. Mr. Latham?
Yes, this is the final payment for this project. If you know, this is the actual line that's going from connecting there by, I believe it's Liberty and Ran Up, pretty close to where the big commercial area is going to be developed there, 412 and 612. Project was funded with the remaining 2022 sewer bond. To make the payment, we're going to use the remaining bond fund, which is $9,512.68. And we're actually going to use sewer impact fees to pay the remainder of $37,882.32.
Question? Set us a comment. Counsel? No comments. Need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, push this to counsel.
Second. Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes. Next, we have a discussion on purchasing a wastewater pump.
This is also James. This is a replacement pump for South Penalto Lift Station. What they would like to do is take the existing pump and get it rebuilt, which is an estimate of around $12,000, and then buy a new pump, keep this other one rebuilt on sidelines in case something happens to the new pump. But anyway, the new pump is estimated to cost slightly under $20,000, but could exceed $20,000 with taxes. So that's why we're actually bringing this to you, because it would probably exceed the $20,000. So don't ask me what kind of pump it is or anything. All I know is that.
It's a blue one.
It looks green.
And where does it?
Two things.
Where, where does the money come from?
Where's it coming from? I assume it's coming from the revenue that the sewer is creating, which would be under capital. One is going to be a fixed asset, the other being a maintenance.
Yeah, I understand. And being that it's maintenance, impact fees would not pay for it whatsoever.
Not on, not on the $12,000, but could want to replace. No, either one. No, you're right. You're right.
If we need it, we need it.
I make a motion to approve or move to city council, I mean.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
It's a green one.
I thought you. For some reason, I thought it was blue, too. Maybe we're covered by.
Zach's going to make the presentation on the South Penalto.
Okay, next we have a bid review for the South Penalto Drainage Project.
Good evening, Councilors. I was dozing off back there. I didn't, wasn't ready to jump up. The, this is for the Penalto Drainage Project.
You say you were dozing off?
I was trying to, so. The coffee wasn't enough. The, so anyway, giving an overview, back in, I think, 2023, maybe it was '24, the city did a inventory of drainage needs across the city. There were 10 or 11 projects identified. They were ranked in severity based on flooding and potential risk to personal property. The number one item on that list was the Penalto drainage culverts and the hydraulic function of those culverts. So this project sprung from that. This is the bid for the project to improve hydraulic performance at those culverts by removing the fishbowl, I'm going to call it, on the east side of the road and doing some grading work to get both culverts to start functioning properly. We got a good bid. They had seven bidders on this. The winning bid was from Sweets or Construction with a bid of $122,690. I will note that was substantially under what my engineer's estimate was at $168,585. So to me, that's a good deal. We hope you will approve it.
That's our final, I mean, we're not paying them a penny more than $122,690?
Not based on these unit prices, no.
They're not coming in here with $100,000 worth of change orders to match.
They have, we have to do a contract amendment, so, but yeah, that's the bid price.
Okay.
I mean, I would think at that point, you start at the $122, and they may or may not come back with them change orders.
Yeah, you're right. It's substantially lower.
I don't anticipate any change orders.
As long as Larry doesn't want to paint it blue and then change it to green.
Obviously.
I'll, I'll say this, too. Out of all the contractors on this list, they were the most engaged during the bidding process. So that might be why we got the best number.
I mean, I know the company. I, I don't know its principles. I mean, they've been around forever.
Sure.
You worked with them much?
Uh, it's, it's been a long, long time, but I can't think of anything negative to say against them.
I mean, if you, I mean, it is kind of a striking difference. There's, there's, you know, they're $30,000 plus less than the next competitors. That right $159,840 is the other low bid, you know, so.
I, I don't, at this time, have any reason to disqualify them. I'll put it that way.
I mean, they're being responsible if they don't do it right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Anything else, counsel?
I like that, Mr. Dan.
No. None on this. Motion?
Is there any public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh-oh. I failed to ask.
Uh-oh.
I'm, I'm just going on the record. We got the flooding concerns down there on Penalto. And so we've had mini bridge revamps, redones, takeout, re-dos. We still have a problem, though, with it coming over the road, flooding out and going down the creek. So I just urge that when we are looking at this new plan, that we keep that in mind as we're going along, that we are doing everything to mitigate coming over the road, and that we are also taking in consideration that there's still a gas line that's exposed under the bridge right now. So before we go breaking down the concrete, either let us know that it's going to happen so we can be out of the area, or let's watch that. But also want to make sure that we are getting that water in the right way so we don't flood out.
Zach, can you address, address those concerns publicly, please?
He sent me the maps.
Well, I've seen the map, and I've seen some of the back and forth of the two of you, but should you mind speaking to that?
Yeah. So again, there's a reason why this culvert system was ranked number one in the drainage evaluation. We have two, I think there are three by five box culverts under Penalto Road. That crossing is significantly undersized for what it needs to be with the watersheds upstream. This will improve hydraulic performance during lower storm events. The road is still projected over top during large events.
You know what I'm going to ask? Quantify large, please.
Yeah. The 100, the 100-year is a typical flooding storm event that you hear often.
More than five inches in a day?
Uh, yeah, more than five inches in a day. So the statistical probability that a storm will happen, you know, once in 100 years. You call it the 100-year event.
So I've been on council five years this month.
Sure.
We've had.
We've had at least three, yeah, so.
It's not bad for 100-year events. We've had three and five years.
It's, the name's a little disclaimer. It is a statistical probability of which we have exceeded in the last 20 years, at least three that I know of.
Congratulations, Towny Town.
Well, congratulations, Northwest Arkansas, because it's happened across the, across everything. So I do want to acknowledge that that's still going to happen because of the, the bridge is so undersized. To fix it to that 100-year will require millions of dollars on a bridge. So we are improving flow characteristics in the more conventional storm events, the one, the two, the five, the 10, but this will still over top during the 100-year. So the storm events that are more frequent, that you experience on a, on a, on a regular basis, this is going to have an impact on. But I just want.
I know that that's not ideal for Ms. Brown or, or Michelle, for that matter, but when we're, is that me?
I guess I'm done.
Am I out of time? Zach's out of time? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madison, Maddie. Okay, so when we're looking at a statistical probability or improbability of 100-year flood.
Yes.
I mean, what else, yeah, what else you got, right? I mean, do we go out to the 1,000-year flood? Do we go out to the millennium flood? I mean, we're doing the best we can.
Right.
Is that, is that a fair statement?
No, that's a very fair statement. And this is probably the most bang for your buck for improvement without buying a million-dollar bridge for that road crossing. Does that make sense? So the return on investment, this should have an improvement, like I said, for more frequent storm events. I just want to acknowledge that that 100-year is still projected over top that road. And to get that criteria under would involve major, a major painter capital improvement.
Can we use impact fees to pay for that bridge?
We're going to need a lot of impact fees. So I just want everybody to be aware.
Get one more last lick into that dead horse.
Currently.
As long as we can add in factors that is going to go on that east side of the bridge and more north of the box to keep the water from coming over the road. Because when it starts backing up, when it's coming through those culverts, it fans out this way and comes over the road. Even if it rains just hard for several hours, it fills up there and starts to slowly flow over.
So that, that is a criteria that this project will certainly improve with the design, because we're going to be lowering the inlets to those culverts. So it's going to give that a lot more capacity before it does over top the road during the more frequent storm events that we saw recently. Just want, and you brought up the 100-year. What does that mean? That's a. Yeah.
But my thing is, why are you picking the least bid on this? We're talking about $30,000 or $50,000 bid. The company that you're picking, I mean, how well did you bet that company? Because I can tell you 100 reasons why you shouldn't, based on what they didn't pay it, though. But I'm just saying, apologize, look at what other losses.
Appreciate your input. Again, I have not had a personal, personally bad experience with them. And. Sure, I understand.
Ask away.
Just out of curiosity, I know what's there's, what the bridge does, there now on that was. What was it designed to accommodate?
I don't think there was a design.
Thank you. So the person that may or may not have designed that bridge is going to have nothing for that water system. It's nothing to do with what you're talking about. Is that going to repeat the problem?
Can you be more specific? Say that again?
You said there wasn't a design.
Right.
For what's in place.
Right.
Correct? You didn't do that, did you?
I didn't put that in, no.
Right, okay.
Right.
I just. No, that was not too long ago. There's some kind of, there's the worst thing out of everything.
I caught the fishbowl, yeah.
No, it's got that slide, too. I mean, you can get on a raft and shoot across the road.
Sure.
So there's, there's no way of saying what is, what exists now can accommodate. You can't compare it because you don't know.
No, we, we can do certain approximations. And I've looked at the hydraulic improvement in the water surface elevation associated with that culvert. So I can quantify that during the lower storm events up to the 10, we're going to have improvement in the flooding heights of those culverts, right? I have personally observed those, that dual system not functioning. Only one culvert flows. The other one does a backwater condition. This should have a big impact on getting those to flow properly, trying to get the best use out of, get the best hydraulic performance out of what's there existing. Happy to answer. Any other questions?
I wonder if impact fees would help pay for some of this stuff. I just wanted to beat the dead horse one more time.
I don't see, that's, that's a maintenance issue, is it not?
I don't know, Mark, what do you think? Is that a maintenance issue or improvement per street impact, impact fees?
I don't think the impact fee report had anything to do with stormwater.
Okay. And yet, if we had impact fees to spend in other areas, then we had other monies that we could spend there.
I think maybe I collect some kind of stormwater tape. I'm not sure how much it is.
I mean, I, I understand with the citizens and, and, and I get it. But short of a bake sale, a really, really good bake sale, I don't know where we come up with the kind of money to pay for that without using something like impact fees or stormwater fees or, or something else. And so I think as a city, for us to do the best we can do to look at that, I mean, I don't, I don't want it running over. I certainly don't want it flooding your mother's home. None of us do. But if we're, if, if we're doing our best, our due diligence to take care of our citizens, but here's what I want to know from you. Do you feel confident that that's precisely what we're getting for this $122,000?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Right. Currently, the hydraulic performance of the east side of that bridge is poor to say the, you know, degraded. This should open that up so we can get better flow under that road where we can. Absolutely.
Have we, have we made a motion to send this on?
We have not.
I, I will, go right ahead, Ms. Brown. I'm sorry.
Okay, Ms. Brown, go ahead.
I, I still have concerns that we're taking.
I, I still have concerns that we're taking all of that cement out of there, and we're going to be putting coconut shell net down and moving earth and putting that back. When I've watched two bridges, the cement literally wither away and fold over. I cannot get it convinced in my mind that you can take dirt and rock and place there, and the flow is not going to just send it down to your house.
Right?
West.
I think, I think this morning, we got some good pictures of historical flooding in the area where lifts of concrete have been uplifted and overturned. Is that what you're referencing? Right, and, and from an engineering perspective, in both of those scenarios, the lip of those concretes were several feet above the flow line of the culverts, which create an uplift effect. We're taking that out with this project to provide a smooth transition between the inlet of that culvert, and we're going to grade it back at a gentle slope in order to improve hydraulic performance. So, I do not anticipate any uplift or a drastic change in vertical grade.
I understand we're lowering it down. You've got to move pipes to do that. You're going to change Mother Nature's course.
To a degree.
To a degree.
To a degree.
Mother Nature don't like that.
We are mimicking Mother Nature in the flow pattern.
Okay. When we do this, if it slows that flow of water down any, is it going to back it up to where the sewer lines and those mains and the flow box at the lift station, that's not indicated on any of the maps?
We're not, the project will not overlap the existing sewer infrastructure. You've seen it, I've seen it, when that floods, all of that area is inundated, right? That goes around the lift station, correct?
No.
When I was out there earlier this year, I, I did watch the water come around the lift station and flow into it. So, I mean, I've seen it back there.
But I've seen the water...
Around the one side of it.
Yeah, exactly, so.
I mean, I see pros and cons, and I'm trying to be confident with you here, but, but we've gotten this far. We were going to do this project this summer in the heat of the summer. We don't even have a flag out there yet. My thing is, we start taking down trees and trunks and moving all this earth, and we start having water flowing. What's going to happen?
It's a valid concern, this project. If you do look at the plans, and I believe you referenced with the cocoa, the coconut fabber, which is an erosion control blanket to keep the ground where it's at and prevent erosion in that channel until we can get a good vegetative buffer. That's supposed to last three to five years until the grass comes up.
I like that word, "until." Until we get that vegetated. So, is, when will this project? Because we've been hearing, well, it's going out to bid, and then we're going to do this, we're going to do that, and there's nothing yet.
Yes.
We've got to do the bid first.
We've done the bid.
We've done the bid?
Yes.
We're going to go on this bid?
We'll sign the contract, we'll get them mobilized.
Okay.
Steep Creek, good one, good one. Triad, Mark Foster, Diamond Sea, and Agape Construction. Sweetser, Steep Creek, I can send this to you if you'd like to read it. No big, I mean, we can, this is posted on, or at least it was posted online.
Okay, well, once this project gets started, what timeframe are we looking at? Because...
I believe this has a 90-day construction period.
90 days?
Yes.
Okay, and we, if you pass it, this will go to city council.
That is correct.
In a couple of weeks?
Yes.
Okay, and then that's mid-October, November, December, January.
Right, right. So, we're getting into the bad zone, hence the erosion control mat.
Well, that's all there is, is an erosion control mat.
Sure, sure.
We're going from cement to dirt. I'm not convinced that that's going to hold anything but.
Nina, we're about finished, aren't we?
Yes, we are, yes, we are.
All right. We are going to take one more pause, and then we're going to get on with this. Oh, but I think we need to...
We need to do something with this time instead of...
Yeah, yeah, but we need to go ahead and send this, make a motion and...
Yeah, I need a motion and a second.
Can I make one, one final comment?
Absolutely.
In the five years I've been here, one of the things I've noticed is that concrete doesn't stop water. But something like this coconut mat could, and we can look back, I mean, for thousands of years, we've got Roman roads that still exist, right? And they've done a pretty good job. So, it would seem that we've had some bad builders or some bad engineering up to now.
Sure.
In various areas, but you, I trust you. You, you trust them, you feel confident with this?
Yes, I do.
Okay. That, that's, that's what I need to hear, and hopefully, it helps you all as well. But, I mean, we, we've got to make, we've got to make a move, and I think we're making the best move that we can.
I agree.
Okay, so, I, 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 once again, I'll make a motion to send this to council.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Rocco.
Tim?
Yes, ma'am.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, a five-minute, and it will be five minutes.
What's the time?
9:49.
9:49. I apologize. Now, we're back in session. Now, we're going to review a bid for the city hall roof replacement.
Yes, bids were open on Friday, the 12th of September at 2:00. We received four bids, which I think you have a tab sheet with it. The lowest bidder was Arkansas River Valley Roofing for $118,000, which includes the replacement of the guttering. And of course, we have the solar panels, which I'm not sure if they work or not, but anyway, that does include removing them. I will tell you, that is a very good bid. Actually, we got two good bids. What we actually received from the insurance company for the total between the two roof replacements and the guttering was $128,000, so we'll have a little extra there. So, $118,000 was the low bid. I recommend you guys move that to council to get approved so we can get this roof on before the snow flies.
Have you done any vetting on Arkansas River Valley Roofing? They're the only, I hadn't heard of any of these companies other than TF Thompson.
I mean, they're bonded, I mean, they got, they had a, they had to, they had to actually give us a bond or cashier's check.
Yeah.
And I have a cashier's check of 11/8, so.
Okay.
I'm pretty good on it, thanks.
All right, thanks, Mark.
Hey, Mr. Latham, I know that there have been some storms in the area that have caused damage to lots of roofs, and insurance companies, we'll cover some of that. Have we checked with our insurance company to see if any of this is covered?
Not that I know of.
And, and what exactly is it that's wrong with our roof that we're replacing?
Hail damage.
Okay, so...
I will tell you, I got a leak in my roof, and I think a lot of it has to do with... My understanding is, is that it's these solar panels you got up there that supposedly, whatever they screw into the metal, they're supposed to replace that rubber thing every couple of years, and I'm not aware that those have ever been replaced when they were put up, so.
Right, understandable. Well, it might be worth reaching out to our insurance company. I don't know who would do that. Is that your purview, or is that...
Well, I think now they're going to have to remove, I mean, before they do the roof, those solar panels are going to have to come down.
Right.
So, hopefully, when they reattach them, they'll put some new rubber on it.
Understood, but my question is more about the roof damage. I know that there are insurance companies that will reach out and say, hey, you've got hail damage. We know that there is a hail issue in the area, and your insurance company will, will cover a portion or all of that. Has anybody reached out, or who would reach out is maybe a better question?
Well, I, I believe the city facilities are, are insured by the municipal league through the... I'm forgetting the name of the program, but, because my brain is tired, but...
Come on, man, it's only 10.
But, but that would just be a call to Little Rock to the municipal league.
Okay, and who would make that call? Is that the, you can make for us, Mr. Aigman?
I, I could help the city make that call, yeah. But I, yeah, I thought I heard there was insurance proceeds, but...
We have received a check for over 220...
For the roof?
No, this is for all the damaged roofs.
Okay, all the damage from...
This, we received a check, as I mentioned, for both of these at $122,000 from the insurance company. They came out with adjusters, they looked at every roof, including every little thing here.
Okay, so that's something we've already done, and that counts, the carpet replacement and everything. Okay, thank you, that, that answers my question. Thank you so much.
Is the leak, is the roof currently still leaking?
It is in my office, I don't know about anybody else.
Well, you can, you can see in... Yeah, you can see in tiles here, it looks like we've got water coming up above these tiles. I'm not sure if they're going to cover that as well, but...
I want to get blood insurance on my office.
You ought to. You've got to keep that window shut. You've got to keep that window shut.
Either that or buy a pair of floaties.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
Rocco?
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Next, we have a discussion on annexation, and Mark Latham, of all people.
Yes, I don't know if you want to discuss this now. I will tell you that if it does move forward, we'll need to get it on a, a vote. We were hoping to try to shoot for the next election, which I think is in November? No, not in November.
March, right?
March, is it not? March, yeah. We had a staff, we had several staff of us formed a committee. We've been talking about this for the last 18 months, trying to figure out exactly what's a good area to focus on. As you know, our illustrious legislature decided to take our ability to know what our future outside a mile and a half of, trying to protect our zoning outside the city limits, and they took that away. So, what we looked at was, is the area where I think some of the most precious areas are going to be, especially when you talk about commercial. So, if you look at the map, I tried to apply another map, but basically what we're doing is, if you look at the light purple, that is actually currently in the city limits. If you look at north, you see the green, that's Elm Springs. And then you see two green lines, or excuse me, not green, light green, or you see, if you follow Wildcat, you take Wildcat, you run Wildcat all the way over to the county line, which would be Benton County. So, we're, we're suggesting to go Wildcat north all the way to, you know, up to 68, take 68 and south of there. I don't, I have no idea how many acres that is, but it would protect us, I think, from a long-term perspective regarding protecting those zonings. Right now, you know, you could, somebody could come and get with the county and decides they want to build a nice trailer park out there off of Harmon over there, and you guys don't have any, we don't have any protection on even, we can't even tell them no. So, I will tell you, talking with public safety, including Chief Jensen, along with Chief Crew, it's not really going to create any major right now of response times. It doesn't affect fire, it's in within the five-out, five-mile thing that Ryan is trying to protect. We've got a map that shows, he draws a circle around there just to make sure we've got protection in that area. The only thing that we would be obligated to would be some of the roads out there that are currently rocker or, you know, dirt, that we would have to make some improvements. But overall, you know, I mean, if I lived out there and I was living in the county, I'd want to be in the city for two reasons. One, I could get a police officer there within three to four minutes if I was, had somebody in my house. Right now, if you want a sheriff to respond, you've got a while of time. The other thing that they've got, which means that they would be able to receive a better fire rating on their facilities, I mean, their homes and stuff, so they may have a cheaper rate there. That's mainly in the Washington County water areas, so, you know, that's something that we wouldn't really need to have to mess with. It gives us an opportunity to take a look at some sewer areas out there that I know we would like to be able to do, especially in that commercial area, so, just a thought. Does anybody have any questions? Pike?
I think election year, election, special elections, and that's not really, I guess it's kind of considered special. They are held in March, right? We have to have three months of meetings, right? So, if we're going to do this for the March election, we need to work ex post haste.
If not, we'll move it on to November, but, you know, this is something we'd like to really kind of get out in front of. I don't want to blindside anybody of it and, you know, give them the points of what, you know...
Well, if, if we've got the, I mean, if we've got the area that we're... This is final as far as what you're proposing to us?
No, no, it's not.
This is not final?
No, no. This is just the suggestion from the committee of where we think would be good for us to propose future...
And, and us also, I mean, it's, it's not just the people who are being annexed that vote, but it's people of Tawny Town that also vote for that, too. And March may be a little ambitious if we don't have this even finalized yet, but maybe not, I don't know.
Well, I think it'd be good to, you know, if you guys, if you want to, you know, have a public meeting or something and present what we've got, and maybe somebody else has a better idea, I don't know.
Well, I think, if, if I'm not mistaken, I think we have to have three meetings. So, is that not right, Mr. Aigman? We have to hold three public hearings on...
I believe that's the case. I've got it pulled up right now, I'm taking a look. I'll, I'll let you know here in one second.
Thank you.
And then that gives us an opportunity to see if these people want to be annexed or not, right? Did they get a...
They, they vote too.
They vote as well?
They vote too, yeah.
Out of curiosity, what, this area south of Wildcat Creek here, Mr. Latham, what is that? Is that, is that still unincorporated Washington County? And, and, and the, the city limit there in the purple is, what road is that?
The purple, yeah.
And what road is that? Is that, is that Penalto, what is that?
No, it, I mean, it goes...
Further out than that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure.
Do you know what road that is? Which one we're talking about?
That's over Highway 68 or...
Where this city limit is here?
The Brush Creek subdivision, isn't that the...
You're going the right. Is that Brush Creek subdivision?
No, down, he's talking about down the bottom. Oh, you're talking down here, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking up.
No, I meant, I meant the north and south line. When is that?
Right here?
No, over to your right, over to, over to your right.
That right.
Yeah, right, right there, the other, the other. Yeah, is that Penaltto?
Yes.
Okay. And then, okay. I mean, the lines are a little, a little odd. It might be nice if they were a little more square, but I know we need to draw the line somewhere if we're going to do it, but, you know, again, it would be good to know if anyone wants to.
But once you take a look at it, we won't vote on anything.
Okay.
And then we'll come back. Chief's actually very much involved in this, if there's any questions. Once you take it, take a look at it, have any questions during this, we don't need to move it forward yet. I mean, I've been having some, right, and you did, so we have to look at it very, we got.
Sure, okay.
But I think this is very important for us to take a look at. If you respectfully, I mean, he's been talking about, I mean, the coverage from Fortwell between, which is my huge house. And, you know, 68, south of there, I think it's going to be something that's going to be made, maybe the south is the area that we probably need to take a look at. Y'all take a look at it, share with it, see what you want to do.
And we'll try to maybe schedule something. I'll get with you guys and try to figure out when we want to next, kind of our next move. Okay?
Sure. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Don't go anywhere, Mark.
So are we finished this discussion? That, we're just going to examine some more and come and talk to Mark as needed?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, as a, as a personal view, I would rather vote on this in November than March, just because March elections are usually very sparsely attended and it's kind of a big deal.
It is a big deal. Okay, next, we have a discussion on the city clerk's duties. That would be Mr. Latham.
Well, I think it's Rhonda and I. I know that there's been some discussions about, you know, I had put in here just my previous experiences where you actually designate a deputy city clerk who actually does not only the FOI, but also does the agendas and everything else. And if you look at your current ordinance, you know, all that stuff really has to do with the council making those appointments of who actually does that. And I would suggest, even in the, it says it's a train to designate deputy appointed by the city council. So I'm going to turn this over to Rhonda. You know, Rhonda came to me, I don't know, a month ago or something, said, you know, I'm working on the budget. She says, you know, I need some help. And so I kind of fiddle around trying to figure out what we're going to do, but I think she's got a suggestion. I'm going to let her, turn her over. I think she's got a letter or something that she sent me out.
Yeah, I've sent a email out to you guys requesting your support for two city employees be either, you can do a deputy or just let me appoint some help. And I gave the reasons why, and I think that is, should be sufficient in my letter. Or in my request, I should say.
Thank you for bringing this up. It's kind of quite ironic because in my email to the admin assistant and the clerk treasurer, I'd also put in this exact same ordinance. And I think I'm the one that helped get Rhonda's letters put into the agenda tonight. But yeah, it does say in our code that under 30.52 right there, we're circled and highlighted and underlined that the city council is to designate her a deputy that's supposed to be appointed by us. So I think it's in our purview to appoint somebody to assist her out with it, but you've come to us asking either to assign two employees or?
Yes, I have two that have been doing it prior to the new hire of the mayor's personal I think they're more qualified. We've had, there's been some issues, you know, with a few things, and I just think to keep my position transparent and, you know, we was talking about loyalty to the mayor. Well, my loyalty is to the citizens of Tawney Town. That is my first and foremost loyalty goes to. And we've had some citizens that's had some issues with either getting information for FOI's and, you know, there's just, it would just be a much smoother ride going back to the way it was.
So this would remove that or those duties from the mayor's personal assistant?
I've already, I've taken the FOI's myself.
Okay.
I've been doing the FOI's. The assistant has been doing the agendas and we've had some issues there, but I'm doing my full-time job and now I've got this, and this has taken up a lot of time.
And, yeah, I'm so sorry. So again, just to understand that those duties would come from the mayor's current personal assistant and go to somebody that you designate?
Yes, they would go to Luann and Matty.
And?
Help me out with the FOI's, the agendas, doing filings with the county, whatever I They're not going to be doing it by themselves. I will be hands-on. I just can't be this much hands-on.
And their current bosses are cool with that? With them handling those duties?
Department heads? Mark?
We have two different department heads and one is not here to, no, yes, no.
Well, I would suggest that within their job description, that it does include what they're actually going to do.
We can do that.
Okay. And I would suggest that they be supplemented in some way financially for doing those duties because their job right now does not include, the only one, Matty does all the planning agendas, planning commission agendas. But the FOI also needs to be assigned to both of them. You're going to have to have two of them. I mean, you got, you know, somebody's sick or somebody's on vacation or something like that, you got to have, you're going to have to have two, what I call two deputy city clerks. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And to that point, if one of them are sick, the other one would cover, but you ultimately even still have the CT that would be a third.
Yeah, well, she's, she's the one ultimately responsible.
Correct.
Legally, she's ultimately responsible for the records of the city, period.
Correct.
Right, so whoever she's, you know, we'll work through whatever time limit that I think Tim, you mentioned, do they have time? I know Brad is a little bit concerned with Matty's time, but I think we can probably work through that. I know that, well, Luann's here, you know, she's really focusing on her job as HR and she's doing a lot of training right now. And so, but, you know, we'll do what we think we need to do to be able to make sure we follow code and do it right. So that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments. I really don't have anything to add. I think it's important to note that we're not adding two new positions. I think some people were.
Yeah, yeah. We're just, we're adding to their job descriptions, the final duties.
And as the person responsible, you know, I think it's obviously within her purview to do so. She's got people that she trusts. And I'm just going to follow up on one thing. The FOI suit's not a joke. The one that's filed, it is not, there, I would encourage you to make your own decisions. It's open litigation. I'm not going to talk about what allegations are contained in that. You can go look it up yourself. It's arcourts.gov, the case number is 72CV-25-2686. Counsel may have been emailing the original and the two amended complaints. Obviously, should it go to trial, the trier of fact will determine the guilty parties, but, you know, FOI suits are not a joke. And I think what's one thing that people appreciate about FOI is the ability for people to see how transparent we are or are not, and the ability to access information. And so I think it's important that we follow through with the request. We have a department head and we have an elected official, both asking for help to help with the FOI compliance. Also, this is a time to maybe jump in and budget for some FOI software help, JustFOI or one or the other. I think I brought three to the table several months ago. So we might want to look into that too, to help expedite the processes. So that's really all I've got to say about it.
I think Mr. Burr's had something to cut him off earlier. I bet it was really important, but it was several minutes ago and it's past my bedtime. I have no idea.
Danny, you got anything?
No, sir, no, sir. Yeah, I just think we help her, you know, she sent us these letters. We got the FOI protocol that was in your packet that kind of lays down the law of what's currently in our code and who they're supposed to go to and how it's supposed to be followed out in the procedure. And then she sent you a letter asking for this assistance, and it's right there in your, in our code, so we need to act on something and whether that's designate one deputy or find two within the city, city walls that we can appoint, and they're agreeing to, you know, assist in this matter. You know, Mr. Latham talked about compensation. I don't know where that's deliberated and discussed and negotiated, but I think, yeah, that's, that's probably something that's appropriate if we're adding more stuff to their job descriptions. So.
Well, that's what I wanted to say, actually. Thank you.
Ah, I got you back.
So here's my view, and it's not popular and I'm sorry, ladies, but if, if we're going to pay them more, I understand that, if their job description is more hours, right? But if we're shifting hours from their current position to a different position, I'm not sure that, that it justifies a change in, in their pay rate. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Well, I'm assuming that they will get a bump this, we do this every year.
For sure, yeah.
But if more is warranted, then that.
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know, there's, you know, there's a lot of times you get, I don't, I mean.
And they're just becoming more, a bigger asset for the city.
Well, I, again, I'm not opposed. I'm just like, it's something worth discussing.
Sometimes you get more responsibilities thrown on you at your job and.
That's true.
You know, and may not get a pay increase, so.
That's also true.
You know, I don't know.
It's just, we're spending, we're spending, we're spending their money. We just want to make sure we spend it right. But, but with that said, I believe that our clerk treasurer certainly has a right to appoint whomever helps with, with these duties in whatever capacity you deem appropriate. And I think if you've got in mind those two ladies there, I think you've made an excellent choice, and I, I support that 100%. So do we need to make a motion to send this off to counsel?
Yes. This is going to have to go into, Justin, will it need to be an ordinance or a resolution?
I think it's going to be need both, because if you're going to appoint two, you need to change the 30.52 to allow for multiple deputies.
Better just one.
And then there needs to be a resolution from the council to appoint those, because that's the way that the code reads.
Okay, can you, I'm not going to say help with it, can you do it?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I can prepare this.
Be leading the blind.
Yeah. And then I assume job description changes will come from administration.
Yeah, and you want a detailed of everything that?
Well, when there's new job descriptions, those will have to be adopted by resolution. I don't know if that'll happen in October, that may follow to the next Cal.
Okay. Okay.
That's not as important as the other two, the resolutions.
Ordinance and the resolution.
The descriptions. We could, we don't have to do them simultaneously. We can do them, we can do the job descriptions later.
I don't think you necessarily have to do it. I think, I think I'd be up to y'all on, on whether you wanted to do that all at once or.
I'm fine with getting the descriptions later.
Good.
Yeah.
Any other, all duties assigned usually covers about everything.
Yeah.
That's true.
With that said, there is a motion on Tim.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, whom did the motion?
I did. Tim.
And Amber?
Mm-hmm.
Roll call.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion on the approval of contract with Geotech Services for Clint's Road.
Yeah, I bring this to you, as I mentioned, we're going to do a couple of testing. One is we'll get the traffic counter out on Clink, give us a better idea. I think we've identified that, where the two areas we're going to be focusing on. The other thing I indicated was is to do some testing on the actual pavement, kind of figure out whether or not the pavement right now will be supported of the 80,000 pound trucks that run up and down there. I will tell you some good news. Okay, you guys want to hear some good news?
Yes, I would love to hear some good news.
You know, one of, one of the things that I think is important is when we look at the future, we have no idea how long Equovisco's going to be there, but we got to find another access to the landfill. So I met with Tim Conklin, who's the CEO of the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning, and asked him to get together a group of Northwest Arkansas leaders to embrace the fact that the region itself has got to come together and find an alternative route to get to the landfill. And we are meeting on Friday, this Friday, at the regional planning with not only members of Boston Mountain, Solid Waste, but also with a couple of the big mayors of the big four, four cities, along with the Northwest Arkansas Leadership Council, there'll be a membership there, along with, I think, one more person, I can't remember his name. We've got a couple, I believe, judges that are going to be there. So the whole idea is, is that Tawney Town cannot be the access to the landfill. I'm just telling you, not on Clink, not on Clink. And looking at some options, whether, whether we go west over, you know, on Arbor Acres and come around maybe to the 612 area, or go east on Kelly over to 112. There might be some other options that we want to look at. But what I'm trying to do is, is come up with a fact that the city of Tawney Town does not have 20, 30, 40 million dollars to do this. It's going to have to be, it's a regional problem. It's not a Tawney Town problem. So that's going to be the message on Friday. I do believe, at least talking with Tim, that people understand that and find a resolution to Clink Road. But I do want, would like to do this test. You have a contract in front of you. The only reason I bring this to you is, is because this was only an estimate of 19,000. So it could go over 20. I can't guarantee you anything, but I would like to get this done so we at least know what we have out there. Questions?
I think it's an issue of safety, so I think it's the right thing to move forward on.
Okay.
Question about coming off of 612, I know this may be several years down the road, but is there a possibility of getting Waste Management Landfill, Equovisco Landfill, its own exit off of 612? That, I mean, they could pay for that.
I mean, that's, that's an option. I think Waste Management will probably be brought into this conversation, looking at some kind of. at some kind of, uh, financial support with this, so, but we need to talk about, are we gonna get together? Are we gonna come up with a resolution? I know that, uh, Congressman Molak, even early, uh, kid Larry about, Larry said, "Oh, that's not gonna happen, Mark." I said, "You have no idea what I can do if I put my mind to it." But anyway, um, you know, it's, it's something that we have got to look at the future, and I will tell you, if you, you look at the, the big maps that they've got for 2050, they actually got a road targeting on the west side of Highland that actually will connect Farmington, that will run up on the west side, it'll connect right to six-twelve and four-twelve. So, you know, it just depends, you know, what's the best solution to try to get traffic on, because, you know, if there's over three hundred trucks right now running on Clink, what's it gonna be like in ten years?
Six hundred.
A bunch, probably another hundred. You know, as many people are moving in here, it's just more trucks that are gonna roll in here, and so, you know, we're even getting semis, I was telling Cory, what I worry about, we got semis coming in from different states right now. I don't know if you know that, but that's happening.
Can I ask you a question, Mark? I mean, this is under your discretionary spending limit, right?
Yeah, but I, I didn't want to come in and all of a sudden it cost me twenty-one, twenty-one thousand dollars, so...
Can we give a little leeway on that, Mr. Eichmann? Or, I mean, if, if, we've got a number that's in front of us, and he wants to get this started, he's under the, his spending limit.
Well, I think what he's worried about is that the project gets started and finds out it's a little over twenty, then he has to wait a couple of weeks. So, if, 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 if there's a resolution to approve and, uh, there's a thousand dollars more to it for some reason, then, then, then that can be authorized through the purchasing policy, so...
Okay. It's kind of like the wastewater pump discussion earlier. It was a little...
Blue or green.
Yeah, the blue or green, yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second. Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Sorry, Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
This goes to city council.
Was there public comments on that? Oh, I'm sorry. I did not ask. I, I failed to ask, I'm getting old and forgetful.
Sorry, I understand. Eighteen seven oh two Clearwater Road, Kenneth Lovett. Uh, looking into the future, why aren't we looking at the roads? Why don't we address the problem? Close it. You know, we're, we're involving Northwest Arkansas Council, you know, and all these people. We don't need new roads in there, we need it removed because nobody's taking care of their business. That's all I got to say, but we're looking in the wrong direction.
Mr. Ziegler, okay, go ahead.
Not in South Penaltto, just with being top to Clint's, I hope somebody's looking at these lights when we get this Clint's light put in, get Barrington and one-twelve maybe working together. I...
Seriously?
Okay, honestly. Okay, it's just, I mean, and whether it's true or not, I hear that Barrington's outdated, needs to be upgraded. If it is, man, the traffic, it's, uh, it won't solve it, but man, if we get those lights to all work together, it'd be awesome.
Mr.?
Yeah, sure.
I'm not a citizen, but I pay taxes, may I speak?
Someone just mentioned about traffic. Oh, my gosh, take grandkids to the school there in Rawlins, it's unbelievable. I mean, and Tonnitown has really done their part for Northwest Arkansas with this landfill, forty-some years. I, I don't, I don't get it either, and I'm, you know, I hate to agree with Kenneth, but I don't, I don't, I don't get it. Hope this is my time to talk. Steve Unger's been a big advocate, you know, about this landfill and been helping us. He, uh, he asked a former colleague, a doctor of his in the military, to examine the latest May two twenty, two, twenty twenty-five air test results and review the twenty twenty-four Arkansas Department of Health study done after the twenty twenty-four ADQCT air test results. Philip Langrim is the doctor who reviewed the latest air test that ADQCTH performed in, in May of twenty twenty-five and reviewed the Arkansas Health Department study. He's a well-known doctor, he is an epidemiologist, a pediatrician with degrees from Boston College, Harvard Medical School, London School of Hygiene of Occupational Medicine at the University of London. He served in United States Medical Corp, US Navy as captain, receiving several distinguished medals of honor, worked at New York's Mount Sinai Medical Center as a Director of Children and Environmental Health of Preventive Medicine, and currently works for Boston College as a Director of Global Public Health and the Common Good, and has written several books on environment and effects of children, so he's, he's probably pretty, pretty sharp, I would think. Dr. Lanigan read through the September eighth, twenty twenty-five latest test report from the Arkansas Department of Energy and Environment. He puts these in bullet points for his findings. Bullet one, this, this report acknowledges the main finding of the Tonnitown air sampling study done in May by CTT LLC, that two components, benzene and ethyl benzene, were identified as having contributed likely from the landfill. It acknowledges that another nine components, compounds, were also identified as having contributions possibly from the landfill. Bullet two, finds a classification most likely from the landfill, likely from the landfill, and possibly from the landfill to be subjective. It would be preferable, in his opinion, to simply state that eleven volatile compounds were detected near the landfill and that two compounds, benzene and ethyl benzene, were detected at especially high levels. Bullet point three, nowhere does the September eighth report note the well-established fact that benzene is a proven human carcinogen that is strongly linked to excessive occurrences of leukemia, lymphoma, infants in the womb, young children, and elderly are especially at high risk. Let me read that again. Especially occurrence of leukemia, lymphoma, infants in the womb, young children, and elderly are especially at high risk. Bullet four, just if I could get thirty more seconds. Bullet four, the May twenty twenty-five air test shows lesser amounts of chemicals found in the air than the twenty twenty-four air test that ADQC performed, as it is possible the gas, the energy plants were not running at normal levels, and the weather was stormy, rainy. The Arkansas Health Department recommended testing on-site at Waste, Waste Management, and also testing the hotspots where concentrates of chemical benzene and acetylene were found in twenty twenty-four air tests from the ADQCTE test. Those Arkansas Health Department recommendations were not adhered to. Bullet five, the final bullet, it would be, therefore be wise to take measures to reduce benzene exposure now and not wait for tragedy to happen. I got a flyer from Governor Sanders that said one of her main top priorities was protecting the city, protecting, uh, children, children. Well, if she was so protective of children, she would come here, and that would be something, maybe y'all can't do nothing about the landfill, but you could certainly get her here, to speak to her, to tell her what's going on here. And this city has done their part for Northwest Arkansas having a landfill, and, you know, that'd be something, to get her here, to talk to her. She won't come, she comes here very often, and, you know, we're her constituents, you would think she could, and I would think, you know, if you could do that, that would be doing something, you know, to help the citizens. Thank you.
Moving on, a discussion to reestablish a building official.
Uh, that's already, that was part of S two, so we're already done?
Oh, okay. No, that, that was not...
Oh, is that yours?
That's you.
That's the same thing?
It's different.
It's part you.
Oh, is it?
Agenda item you, yeah, that's me. Okay. Uh, back in June of this year, uh, the mayor requested that we remove the titles administrative assistant and building official from our city code. Uh, we still have it, uh, administrative assistant on, um, our org charts and some other areas. Um, as a rule, we, we attempt to give our mayor whatever, uh, any mayor, whatever they want, right? Presuming that there aren't any legal or ethical problems, uh, with those requests. Uh, but after removing the building official title, it's become clear that that wasn't a good idea. There are two big issues with the change. The first is that the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, which applies statewide even here in Tonnitown, uh, the term building official is used over and over in this massive three-volume set that's seven hundred pages. I recommend you read it. Uh, and we don't have a building official. The second problem is that our own city code has several areas that mention, uh, building official and where the building official should have authority, and yet again, we don't have a building official. So, the way I see it, we can either add the term back to our code or rework the rest of the code to remove building official in the other areas in which it exists in our municipal code. I think it makes the most sense, uh, sense to simply put building official back into our code so that the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code makes more sense to us. Your thoughts?
Certainly.
Comment from...
My understanding is, is Mr. Duncan is the building official. He was on the ISO report stating he was the building official.
I, I, I agree, but we have removed the term building official from our code.
I'm just telling you.
So, he is acting in that role.
Correct.
But we don't have a building official, so we, we don't, like, I'm glad that it's Roger Duncan, and right now we could say, "Oh, it's Mr. Duncan," but we don't officially have that role. We also don't currently have an administrative assistant, I, I don't know if there's a problem with that one or not, but you know how you kind of pull a thread, like we did with the Roosters? Uh, you start pulling and, you know, the next thing you know, the sweater falls off. Uh, it's just one of those things, as I start pulling on that, I'm like, "Oh, goodness sakes, we've got an issue."
I know his job description says that.
That's great, but our current code doesn't mention it.
We need to rectify that, I think.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a silly little thing, but it's just one of those things I think we need to rectify, yeah.
Danny?
No, I mean, I, I agree, I mean, if you want to make it, uh, trans, not transparent, but cohesive where it flows, that's, that's probably the best option, rather than amending the rest of the code to remove those, uh, that terminology from the code, so...
Okay. And I've been in discussion with our attorney about that, uh, and, uh, Mr. Eichmann, if you could help sort of rework that, we'd appreciate it.
I will, I've been looking at that. I think one of the issues is where it was placed, where it was codified. It was codified under city officials with, you know, mayor, clerk, um, and it probably just needs to go in a different, different area of the code. There's also, you also have a planning and zoning official, these are kind of both terms of art that are used in statutes, so, um, um, that's usually like a designee, like Brad is probably the, the planning and zoning, um, official, but I think we can find us another place to park that.
Okay.
It'd make a little more sense.
Yeah, and if we can park, uh, Mr. Spurlock where he belongs as well, that'd be great, or that title.
Yep.
Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, with that said, I'd like to make a motion that we move that to city council.
Second. Roll call.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Next.
And last.
No, 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 not necessarily. A discussion on creating a resolution to take a position on a lawsuit against Waste Management. Danny?
Yes, uh, I think, um, I don't know if it was last city council, I want to say it was last, last city council, uh, the mayor kind of brought us up to speed on where we were with the lawsuit of the appeal on the expansion of Waste Management and EcoVista. Um, but I hadn't heard anybody take a firm stance on whether we're going to appeal it or if we're going to, um, let the cards fall where they have, so I thought I'd bring a discussion here and see if we can't come up with a resolution to pass to city council, uh, taking a position one way or another.
Citizens.
Kenneth Lovett, eighteen seven oh two Clearwater. If it was regulated properly, y'all wouldn't even know who I was. But it's not. And unless y'all step up and force that issue, I believe it's not ever gonna be, you know? And, uh, people can laugh, they can joke and whatever they want to do, but it is definitely affecting people. There's children out there that have unusual fevers for no cause, uh, rheumatoid arthritis, children below the age of five. Uh, a lot of folks blame it old age, it's, it's not old age. You know, when you get out there and you breathe acetylene and benzene, look it up on Google, I ain't gonna tell you. See how it affects your bones, see how it affects your joints. If y'all don't do something, it's gonna continue, and I feel like y'all are in the place where you can do something if you appeal it.
Anyone else?
I actually went to Waste Management last year, went to their office, asked them about a number of things that were happening with the leaching, and talked to three people who could tell me the names of the people I had to talk to, had to talk to, had to talk to, which is fine. I mean, you're gonna go way higher than that, you're gonna, it's, these are class action lawsuits, they're bigger. They're your Gloria Allreds, they're your Gary Quick's, those are the people that do those lawsuits, they're major. Um, I don't know who you guys' lawyer is, but you guys probably have some serious class action lawsuits on your, like, not on your hands, on, against them, um, but the people in your community have them, and those lawsuits do take a long time to pay out, but they do pay out, and they should have to pay. I mean, they're not Waste Management, they're not just in one city, they're not just in this city, they're in every city, you know what I mean? Like, so you should be suing them, if there's something you have to appeal, appeal it.
Counsel? Oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
Just make a comment. Um, you know, if you're gonna make the next step against Waste Management, although this is not a, this appeal of this permit issue is probably pretty weak, in my opinion, um, and whether it's appealed and done something else, I mean, the further you go up the chain, the more money it's gonna cost, and these attorneys, you're gonna have to get some high-powered attorneys that are gonna be eight, eight hundred to a thousand dollars an hour compared to a two hundred dollar one if you're wanting to fight. Now, let me just tell you this, because I've been into a lot of different situations. I'll tell you a story real quick. When I took over in Salem Springs, the state of Oklahoma and Salem Springs was in lawsuits all over the place. It had to do with water rights on the Illinois River. And Oklahoma, finally, the Water Resource Board decided that they were gonna reduce the amount of water that the city could take out of their intake. There are their intake and there's current intakes in the state of Oklahoma. So, Oklahoma has the water rights to take, tell you exactly how many acre feet you could take out of that lake or that river every day. They decided to reduce that amount sixty percent. Now, I want you to think about this. The two largest users in that city, and that was a very large industrial city and it still is, were Simmons, which is a poultry, and Allen Cannon Company. They use sixty percent of the water. Our reduction of that was devastating. What we ended up doing, Mayor Moose and I did, we went over to the Oklahoma City Water Resource Board, and we were in front of a stone-faced group of people. And we appealed to them basically saying, "Hey, let's try to work together instead of having these lawsuits back and forth. They, they're not resolving any issues." And so, we stayed what we wanted to do, they stayed what they wanted us to do. The older lady that was in charge of the commission at the time spoke to me and said, "I'll get back to you in a couple of weeks." She called me, she said, "Mark, I'm coming over, I want to talk to you directly." She brought a letter, and this is what she told me, she says, "I trust what you just said, and we're gonna release that restriction of water." Now, we, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars were fought on these lawsuits when reasonable people can't come together and, and try to work things out. I don't know if you want to spend a lot of money trying to fight everything, I know we've got an air issue. I still think, and I would love to in the next three months, uh, have a meeting with ADQ Director and really just get personally about the fact of the air issues that we have out here in the odors. We're, I'm gonna tell them, we're gonna address what's happening down... I'm going to tell them, we're going to address what's happening down at the lift station, which they identified, correct? So let's take care of that problem. But I do think that we need to be reaching out instead of... It's not going to work, it's not going to work. You can fight, you can fight, you can fight. And how much money is it going to cost to fight? I'm thinking, hey, let's take down the levels of fighting and let's try to work together, especially with, you know, sitting down with Waste Management. I don't like sitting down with Waste Management, talk about some of the issues. We're going to have to sit down with them anyway about the, you know, they're going to have to spend some money. Whatever. If they tell us to, you know, hit the road, Jack, maybe they have an idea. I think, Kenneth, you had indicated that one of the problems is they don't cover. Well, let's talk to ADQ, let's talk to them and say, "Hey, you promise you need to cover what you guys got coming in here." There's ways to be able to do this, but fighting in court doesn't work. I'm just flat telling you, it doesn't work. That's my personal opinion, you can take it any way you want, but that's why, I want to make that statement in front of you guys.
Mr. Latham, do you think that the fighting that we're doing and the lawsuit that we're entangled in with them is keeping them from coming to the table?
I do. I don't think they're, I think that's part of the problem, yes.
Yeah, so you think if we took a position on not pursuing this appeal, they might come to the table and be more amicable to making concessions and helping us move forward?
I think we've already threw up, you know, I mean, we got all this stuff. I mean, the lawsuit, I mean, it was very clear about the circuit court judge. I mean, he didn't even take three weeks, which I think they were saying it was supposed to take. He made the decision that day.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you're going to appeal all that stuff, you're going to have to spend some more money. This stuff is going to go up and up and up. And how much does the city want to fight that instead of maybe sitting down and reasonably talk through some of these issues, especially with ADQ? Maybe they won't, you know? I know that, you know, I'm not afraid to take, you know, whoever needs to go down there and talk with them. I'm not afraid to go down there and talk to them myself. I will tell you, in certain circumstances, you can do that. We had a situation with ADQ when I was in Silom Springs. They were going to fine us a ton of money. Guess what? We went and talked to them, told them what we were going to do. Okay, resolved it. But, you know, emailing them and chewing them out and telling them they don't know what they're doing and all this kind of stuff is not helping the situation. If you can't resolve things face-to-face and just laying it out, then, yeah, we do have a problem, but I do think we need to take that chance. That's my personal opinion, but you guys do what you want to do.
Personally, on this particular issue, which is just about the expansion only, the rulings have not been favorable at all. And it really, like Mr. Latham said, it just hasn't been close. So I think appealing this is just going to lead to the same conclusion, my opinion on it. I don't think it behooves us to continue to fight on that particular issue. I don't, that doesn't mean that we discount anything that people are saying about the air quality. But you know our hands are tied on that issue. We do have things that we can do, as we've learned tonight and in the past few months, that can help mitigate some of the issues. It's not going to mitigate all of them. I know you guys have, are part of the class suit, and that may be more fruitful than, I don't know. But our hands are tied on the air quality issue, but there are things that we can do. I think this particular suit with appealing the expansion, I think it needs to be put to bed. It's, I don't think it behooves us to spend any more money appealing the expansion on that. You know, landfills nationwide are filling up fast. And there's going to have to be a different solution everywhere. There's progress being made in some areas, you know, gasification is one of the things that's coming up, you know? But for right now, I think we need to put that particular lawsuit to bed, need to go to the pre-treatment and address the issues that we for certain know that we have and that we have some authority to do to make them mitigate the problems that are being caused. So that's my position on it.
Mr. Burris?
Thank you. I agree with you. I agree with you. But how do we stop these issues? And before we make a decision to go forward, we need to ask some hard questions. And, you know, the Bible, the book of Luke 1428 says, "For which of you desiring to build a tower does not first sit down and count the cost, whether he has enough to complete it?" So here are some tough questions to whomever wants to hear them. Do we have the right attorney? Mr. Nolan, the attorney working on our behalf, made an embarrassing show in this case in front of Judge Threet and in front of Judge Moulton. I'm sure Mr. Nolan would be willing to appeal, one attorney wouldn't. But we have to figure out, why did we lose? And here's what happened. This case, the PCEC case with Judge Moulton, Judge Moulton ruled. At that case, we had two expert witnesses, a fellow from California talking about fires, and we had our mayor talking about odors. Those were the expert witnesses. They paraded several expert witnesses on lots of different topics. They ate our lunch. We went to a gunfight, a machine gunfight at that with a pocket knife. And we lost badly. Given what Judge Moulton had in front of him, he made a decision. We appealed that decision. That went to Judge Threet. By the way, I don't like anything I'm telling you, I'm just telling you. We went to Judge Threet. Judge Threet likewise said, "Well..." Remember, the appeal was, did Mr. Moulton, Judge Moulton, make the right decision based on the information he had? Judge Threet said, "Sure." He even asked Nolan, "Do you think that we can go to any city anywhere in the country and say, 'Hey, we had a contract with you, we just don't want to keep it anymore.'" By the way, I wish we didn't have a contract with them. I didn't make that decision. That decision was made unilaterally by a temporary mayor we had. We weren't engaged in that. But we can't just pull it. It puts us in a weird spot. But first off, do we have the right attorney? If we appeal, what are we appealing at this case? We're appealing an appeal? And I don't even know if we can do that. But we need to look at some things. We need to look at a full explanation of why we lost. Look at the game film. We've got a college football star in our midst who would have watched that game film. Why did we lose, and what, if anything, can we do differently to win in the future? None of this makes me happy to talk about, because here's what I want to say. We fight it. I live closer to the landfill than anybody else in this room. Personally, I would want to fight it till the end of time. But here we sit with citizens and their tax dollars, and we've got to figure out what we're going to do. If, by the way, we did appeal and we won that appeal, then what? We're in the federal court system. There's, we've got the appeals, we've got federal, it can go all the way up to the Supreme Court. What happens if we take it to the Supreme Court and win? That'd be great, but if that happens, then what? What jurisdiction is there? Can we make anything happen? I don't know. What if we lose? If we lose, then repay all of the defendants' fees, all the way up to the Supreme Court level. Tens of millions of dollars potentially. And that's before we go to civil court. Because they've spent a bunch of money, because we in good faith, or they in good faith did a thing, and we went back on it. I don't know. But here's what I can tell you. I would do whatever it takes to help the people who have health problems. If we've got health problems that are caused by this thing that is here in the city, I think we have an obligation to do everything we can to help. I don't know, I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do. I think you two gentlemen know that, I would guess of the people up on this particular panel, nobody has been more invested in this than me. The wastewater comes down into my yard. Waste management water from a rain comes into my yard, where my kids are. I don't like it. I don't know what health problems they're going to develop or already have because of it, I have no idea. But I am not sure that the court route is working. I've not heard positive reviews of the attorney's performance, as I've already mentioned. And that's from people who are citizens, who want us to win. But I don't want you to feel abandoned. I don't want to feel abandoned. I don't want our city, our citizens, to feel abandoned. So what other steps can we take? Calls don't work, our governor isn't listening. Sarah Huckabee, where are you? As was mentioned earlier, you come to Northwest Arkansas for all manner of photo ops. But what an amazing disappointment you have been in this case. Do you care about people or not? I understand, from a corporate standpoint, you may not want to stand toe-to-toe with a multi-billion dollar company. But we are dying here. We have people here who are suffering great harm. And you sit in your marble tower in Little Rock and you don't do anything. Please, please, come talk to us. Please come talk to these people and help us in whatever way you can. But with that said, from a city council standpoint, I don't know what we do at this point. I don't know that we can continue to throw good money after bad if we're going to continue to lose. Yes, we can be sand in their shorts. Yes, we can be a stone in their shoe. But what, if anything, does it do for us, I just don't know. And it pains me to say it, but I just don't know how we move forward in this case. But I am very much open to your suggestions, especially for those of you that are so intimately involved in this.
No way to get out of that contract? Mr. Eichmann? No way to get out of that contract? With Waste Management, I guess the unilateral piece of it.
The case has to do with the landfill expansion, not a contract.
I'm not talking about, there's a contract, that's what that Moulton told me down there, that the reason being was that unilateral contract, both parties have to agree to get out of it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just don't know what you're referring to.
We, as a city, have a contract with Waste Management's Eco Vista landfill. And we can't just walk away from it.
Are you talking about for residential trash? Is that what you're talking about? What are you talking about? What contract?
The main contract that they're here in Tawny Town.
That allows them to host, right.
Current residents' trash.
You're not talking about the, okay, so you're not talking about a contract, you're talking about the resolution that was done here about the approval of the siding?
Supposedly, there's a main contract that states, you know, it's a unilateral contract for the two, the city and Waste Management, to work together. One person can't break that contract. It has to be both, both agree to get out of that contract to where the, you know, the city, with the host city and all that. It's the host city contract.
Okay, you have the host city agreement?
Yes.
Okay. The host city agreement has the, has the, that was what we were talking about earlier, with the 55 cent a ton fee. That was done six, seven years ago. I don't think that has any implication with this lawsuit at all.
I believe this is something different, counsel.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, I was going to say that...
I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
Well, guys, there's a couple of things. First of all, do y'all know that you have 30 days to appeal from entry of judgment? And it's a solid rule, like, that is a rule, it's jurisdictional. And, you know, this court case was heard by Judge Threet in early September. Now, when the written order comes down, I don't know, that could have been that day, it could have been later. But that's one thing that y'all need to be, you know, very much aware of. Number two is the standard of review, that's what you all are fighting. The, you have a, you're trying to overturn an administrative decision, which is afforded arbitrary creepage review by courts, which is a high burden. They're just not looking at whether you've chinned the bar a 50-50. You have to reach a much higher burden, more closer to like almost the criminal burden of proof than just preponderance, 51%. So it's, an appeal of anything in that, under that burden of proof is difficult. You have to prove that, you know, essentially, ADQ put a blindfold on and threw a dart at a board without looking at anything. That's what arbitrary means. So it's a high burden, appeal of anything in general is difficult. Appeal of administrative decision is even more difficult. So, you know, those are just kind of two things I think you have to keep in mind with regard to, you know, appealing administrative agency. It's difficult because you're afforded that discretion. So, but I do think you need to be cognizant of when the 30-day time period is. Because if it was early December, you've already passed, I mean, early September.
Well, I think it was September 5th was the, was it not? So 30 days is up.
Just the last one, and I apologize, last one. The three resolutions that the city did to reject the expansion, you know, falls under pollution control, 22.203 and 22.204. That states a host city must accept a new landfill or accept an expansion. Well, the Judge Moulton is saying those don't hold no water because the master contract between Waste Management and Tawny Town is a unilateral contract, and there's no way of breaking that. Because it's unilateral, because both parties must both agree to break the contract. And Waste Management's not going to break the contract.
Well, I mean, I'm not aware, I mean, honestly, I'm not the attorney handling that case.
Is that something you could look into?
I don't think it would change anything with regard to this appeal. I don't think it'd have any bearing whatsoever.
If we could just find out, if I could find out, if that's the case, that there's no way to get out of that contract because it's unilateral, and if that is what it is, that was a terrible deal that Tawny Town signed many years ago.
Let me talk to you after the meeting about the unilateral, I know about unilateral contracts. I don't think we're using the right terms, so...
It may not be using the right terms.
Yeah, let me talk to you after the meeting about that, yeah.
Sounds like it. I think the judgment came out the same day. I think it came out on the 5th.
If the judgment was entered on the 5th, then you'd be...
I believe he entered it the same day, so...
Have you got anything?
So there's nothing, not on the expansion.
That's a new caveat that I hadn't thought of, is, you know, did we have a time limit on when we can respond to the appeal? So if we've already expired past that point, if we've already expired past that point, I mean, it kind of makes us moot, but I just know that...
Kind of does.
It sounds like the mayor, Mr. Window here.
I had, yeah, I had a conversation with the mayor where she said she spoke to the majority of us here on council. You know, got a pool of what we wanted to do, and I was told the consensus was the majority of us wanted to proceed with this, and the legal council had told us it was a winnable.
I'm not sure that's ethical to poll us and report what we got, but I hear you.
But, so, you know, I want to, I wanted to put something on record of, you know, are we going to do this in appeal, or are we going to try and come to the table? And, you know, we've got plans for a road to relieve traffic off Clint's, and we've got the leach egg problem, and we need to... the leach egg problem and we need a pre-treatment measure, measurement to put in place. And, you know, we, they're here, so we've got to, we've got to figure a way to, for the time being, coexist, you know, the city and the Waste Management facility over there. So do we need to make a resolution taking aside? Probably not if we don't, if we're already past that, so.
But it sounds like we have nothing to vote on, the mayor made a de facto decision by not following up in a timely manner, so we've got nothing to say, yeah. Bummer. It's a moot point. Could have saved several minutes, I think, sure.
It came out at the end.
So, I guess, that being a moot point, I will accept comments from our council members. Mr. Woskoziak?
I'll keep it short, obviously. Unfortunately, I will not be at the city council meeting in two weeks. This trip was planned in January and I didn't look at the calendar, it probably wouldn't have mattered anyway, quite frankly. So, anyway, so I'm sorry that I won't be here, but I'll be with you guys in spirit.
No, you won't.
Where are you, where are you going to be, Mike? Just checking. Mr. Burris?
Well, congratulations, you have now been a part of the longest city council meeting in Tonnitown city history. It is 11:10, that is all I have to say.
Amber?
Oh, no, good night, thanks for coming.
Danny?
Yeah, thanks everybody for coming out, thanks for the discussion, we've had some new faces, we've had some faces that have been around for a long time, so I thank, thank you for your involvement tonight and your input. And I am sorry to have made this a long meeting, I did have, if you ever watch my track record, I don't usually have these many items on an agenda, but honestly, I'm looking at my points on the, on the agenda, a lot of them were, had a lot of weight to them tonight, so I want to thank everybody for hearing me tonight.
Yeah, what all these guys said, I'm not going to be in Florida playing golf, but I do appreciate everybody coming out, sticking with us through all of this. Oh, and now that I'm finished, then I'm going to go to our attorney. And with that said, I will seek anybody for adjournment, say aye.
Yes, please.